Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. Allow us to call the Monday, February 28th, 2022, meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission to order. Yes, would you like to call, Rule?
Mr. Guyer? Mr. Dungus?
Here.
Ms. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Gothard?
Here.
Mr. Henson?
Here.
Okay, first, on tonight's agenda, we have the approval of the agenda itself.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the one modification of making item number five, number six, and item number six, number five.
We also had election of officers at the end. Do you want to move that up to?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Where would you like it to move it up to, Paul?
I think after the approval of the minutes will be fine.
Okay. Do we have a second on the changes to the agenda?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to election of officers. Oh, I apologize. We'll do that right after we approve the minutes. We have in front of us minutes from the November 22nd meeting, the December 20th meeting, and the January 24th meeting. I don't think we have staff present to approve the December meeting minutes, so we'll put those on for next month, hopefully. So let's start with November 22nd. It looks like we do have the right representation to approve those minutes. Do we have any comments or changes to these minutes from the commission?
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 22nd, 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Sounds good. Sarah, would you mind calling that?
Mr. Guyer?
Hi.
You would need to abstain for November. Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Great. And now looking at last month's minutes. We also have representation to approve these minutes. Do we have any comments or amendments to these minutes from the sta-- sorry, not from staff, from the commission? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from January 24th, 2022.
And I'll second.
Mr. Guyer? Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Abstain.
Mr. Gothard?
Abstain.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Moving through the agenda, and now we'll proceed with election of officers. And are we only doing vice chair tonight?
We're only doing vice chair. At the last month, Ben was elected chair, so we need a vice chair for this one, or for this year.
Congratulations, Ben.
Do we have a nomination for vice chair?
Well, I'd like to nominate the esteemed gentleman to my right, Mr. Gothard.
I'll second that nomination.
I will accept that nomination approved.
Mr. Guyer? Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Abstain.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Congratulations. Okay, our first case on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for a major modification request to Case 1, 1993, Anderson Sanctuary of Ivy Hills, for the property at 8225 Wycliffe Drive. Staff, would you like to proceed with your presentation?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is Mr. Kent Bradley Roush of Kent Bradley Roush Architects. On behalf of Ryan and Emily Hoskins, who are the property owners, the location is at 8225 Wycliffe Drive, and the request is a major modification to the final development plan for Case 1, 1993, and this is for the purposes of constructing a detached pool house and in-ground swimming pool in the rear of the property, which is located in the green belt area. And the green belt area was established when the subdivision was approved through that zone change in Case 1, 1993. The pool house is proposed to be approximately 540 square feet, and the pool is approximately 800 square feet. The improvements also include a concrete patio that surrounds the pool that connects over to the pool house with landscape walls and a fire pit. The home on the property was constructed in 1996, and the current owners purchased the property in 2014. Other zoning history on the property was a patio enclosure in 2006 and then a solar system in 2017. So a little bit of the case history is, we stated, in 1993, the final development plan for the Sanctuary of Ivy Hills was approved. This included a green belt area and also a limits of disturbance area. The homeowners association was also approved, and so the resolution for the subdivision, it was in your pocket, as well as the declaration of covenants and restrictions. Pools, in-ground pools and pool houses are permitted in that neighborhood, however, they're not permitted in the green belt area, and with any requests for that, it is considered a major modification to the final development plan. So there have been similar requests over the years for pools or for outdoor living rooms, and those are listed in your staff report as well as on the PowerPoint. Most all have been approved, except there was one that was denied that included extensive tree removal in the green belt area. This is a property map of the site in question. This is Wycliffe. Again, the property is outlined in red. This is an aerial, so you can see the existing vegetation, and this existing vegetation in the cleared area has been fairly consistent for quite some time. We went back through old aerials. In 1996, our first aerial that was shown, it did show vegetation up to the back of the house, but since then, most of that area has been, has remained without trees. I did talk to the homeowner while we were out there doing pictures, and there was a tree over in this vicinity that was leaning over toward the house that has been removed, but that was the only tree that they recalled that they removed. This is the topography map, and this is kind of how the properties in the sanctuary are, especially those along the perimeter of the subdivision. There's a steep ravine, or a steep topography that goes from the backs of the properties down. This is the site plan, the pool house, which is located here, and then this is the pool. They already do have an existing deck and an existing three-season room attached to the deck, so you can see the attached concrete patio and then the fire pit. It's easier to see in your pockets, but the green belt, this is the zoning certificate that was issued when the house was constructed. This is the green belt area, so essentially, the way the subdivision was set up, anything beyond that line was not to be disturbed, and no structures were permitted in that area. This line right here was the limits of destruction, or construction, limits of disturbance, is what I'm trying to say. So anywhere between here, it was to allow for extra room for the actual construction of the home, but no improvements were permitted past that, that line there. So these are some of the site photos that we took. We're standing, looking back up at the house. Generally, the pool and the pool house will go in this area where the playhouse is and the trampoline is. This is looking out over toward the backyard, again, standing up closer toward the house and looking toward the rear of the property, toward the playhouse, and you can see some of the existing mature trees in the backyard. This is looking over toward the neighbor, kind of to the, the east or, or kind of north. So when you're looking at the house on the street, it'd be the house to the left, and you can see kind of where the green belt comes up into the side yards, and then it kind of circles back around, but this is to give you an idea of what the nature of the subdivision is like. This is looking at the house on the opposite side, again, some of the mature trees that surround it and some of the green belt area. This is looking at the rear of the, the property in question. And again, toward the area, the pool house will be constructed where the playhouse is, and then the pool will be in the general vicinity where the trampoline is. So these are some of the findings to consider. Again, the intent of this development was to preserve the vegetation and the existing, pre-existing vegetation and open space between budding lots and surrounding developed. And again, there have been several similar requests that have been approved. Most of these areas that were approved, it was taken into consideration if the area was cleared, if it had been that way with the subdivision or, or not. And again, with this particular house, looking at aerial photos, we think the backyard was pretty much manicured lawn, at least since 2001, if not before. The pool and pool house are proposed to be completely in the, in the green belt area, so that is something to consider. It's approximately 50 feet into the green belt area. The declaration, covenants and restrictions stating that no building or structure shall be erected, placed, or permitted in the build, in, in any area, except for certain structures, which include pools and pool houses, those are permitted, but not in the green belt area. We did not receive a grading plan, so it is unclear of how much area will be disturbed, and we did not receive any review from the homeowners association. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Let's start to my left with Jonathan.
Since it's all in the green belt or beyond, why, the definition of building or structure, you know, whether it's excluded, but in the resolution, it looks like it's fairly well-defined of, you know, no structure.
Yes, and I put that in the staff report, so detached garages, sheds, that sort of thing are not permitted in the subdivision at all. No structures are permitted in the green belt area. A pool and a pool house is permitted in that subdivision as long as it's outside the green belt area, so. That's why we put it in the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Anne?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Does the proposed 23-foot, 10-inch setback meet the, the setback requirement for the pool house?
Yes.
Okay. And then, looking at the plat that the zoning certificate was issued on, I understand the original house was set outside the green belt, but it, it, that line is awfully close for the no build, and then, so there's a deck and then there's a three-seasons room. Is that, was that part of the original construction? Because it looks like if that was added on to, that that could possibly also be within the.
I believe we did have a zoning certificate on fire, file, and it was all before you got to the green belt area. It was outside the green belt area.
Okay. And then, I, I didn't see, and maybe I probably just missed it, how big that pool house was going to be in terms of square footage?
It is approximately 540 square feet.
And do we have a maximum size for accessory structures in a residential district?
We do. It's based off of a formula. It's 30% of your required rear yard area, so we take the width of the lot, and then you multiply it by the required rear yard setback and 30% of that.
So would, and now I'll put this right back to you, would that 540 square foot meet that requirement?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dungus?
The green belt area, so there was, there's a definition of it in here. Is that a term that the township regularly uses, or is it something that's dated that's morphed into something else?
It was approved specifically for this subdivision, and it was a term provided by the, the builder and the developer of that subdivision, and that's what was included in the, as a condition of the zone change, and then also carried over to the declaration of covenants and restrictions.
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes. So there's no grading plan, but the, the new retaining wall that's going to be on the back, it looks like it's going to be about eight to 10 feet tall. Are there any restrictions on height of that, or also aesthetic of what that wall's going to look like?
There are no restrictions on the height, as long as it's truly retaining. I, there was a question we posed to the applicant, and we didn't get the information yet, so hopefully the applicant can provide that information tonight.
Paul, is there any requirement in terms of, and maybe this is probably more of a building code question, but if that wall is eight to 10 feet tall, does it not have to also then contain a fence?
I believe it does, right.
Some more questions. Paul, the only question I had, kind of went back to the question of purview and whether this actually was a question for us to be reviewing tonight, just because the, do we typically review restrictive covenant, or does that typically go to the county?
With this particular subdivision, it was a condition of the zone change, so that's why we've brought similar requests on the subdivision before the zoning commission.
And is there additional authority, though, that, that could also look at this?
As, as far, well, we were asking for a letter from the HOA, if it is still active, to see if they approved it or they denied it, because I think that's good information for your decision, because you wouldn't necessarily want to contradict what their HOA, HOA said, but no, there wouldn't be a further review.
Okay. No, the only other question, and it's already been answered, so, thank you. Do we have any representation from the applicant tonight? Please step forward and state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Kent Roush. I'm the architect for the project, and my address and everything is on the drawings. And I wanted to talk briefly about the retaining walls. We actually are stepping the pool down about two feet from the existing grade, so if you, if you're facing the back of the house, on the left-hand side, there'll be a retaining wall that's approximately about three feet tall, and that'll help mitigate the size of the wall over by the pool house. So I believe it's about six feet tall, those retaining walls. And specifically, those retaining walls will be done on landscape block, and what that allows us to do is we only have to be about 12 inches deep with the footers, and the landscape fabric will be all going to, towards the grass area, and this keeps a low impact on the trees and all that. The clients, especially Mr. Hoskins' wife, is very sensitive to the landscape and all that. So the other thing, too, is the pool house itself, if we get to a point where we start digging, if we're undermining any tree roots or anything, we will do that back wall and piers and do just a grade beam, so there again, it's only 12 inches into the soil, so we're not undermining the root systems of the trees. And then, as far as the pool house itself, I should have probably classified it as a pool pavilion. There's no interior rooms in the pool pavilion. It's all open, so we have a fireplace, all four sides are open, and there's just a countertop and a grill, so there's no defined interior space, other than the roofs on top of it. And I can answer any questions you have, and then Mr. Hoskins can talk about the, the letter and all that, too.
Commission, do we have any questions for the applicant? I'll start again with you, Mr. Gothard.
I mean, you know, I think this commissioner is just looking at entirely in the green belt that was established with the zoning change. Yes, it's been many years since then, and we understand, you know, trees have been removed for true purposes or for to gain, gain green space, so to speak, in grass. I mean, is there any other options that you have that wouldn't be entirely within the green belt and beyond the green belt?
Actually, normally I would say yes, but this, in this case, it's so close to the house, it would put the pool, if we were, just the pool itself would be right up against the house, and then, so it'd be odd, I think. And we really, before I even started drawing, we had the tree line identified, too, with the site plan, so even though on our site plan, it just looks like the lines, those are exactly where the tree line is, so we were really, made sure we didn't remove any trees to do it. And it was just grass that has been there for 20-some years that we're affecting, but not, no veg, no natural vegetation.
So when you had the survey, you also knew where the green belts stood with the relationship to the house and everything?
Yes, and I called early, too, when we started design, just because I'm getting older and always call anymore, because I'm tired of surprises. So Paul actually let me know that the green belt was that close and everything, so.
That's all the questions I have at this time, thank you.
Oh, sure, sorry. Just in case, we'll go down.
Oh, yeah.
I actually don't have any at this time.
Mr. Dungus?
Just to confirm, I think you answered my question, but the tree line that's shown on the drawings is existing, and where the construction will take place for the pool and the pool pavilion won't disturb any existing trees or vegetation. It's all existing manicured lawn?
Correct.
Thanks.
Mr. Guyer, did you have any questions? I don't think I have any right now, either. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, come on up.
Hi, I'm Ryan Hoskins, the homeowner. Manicured lawn, thank you, that's generous. But my wife actually has her master's in biology and conservation, so we love our trees, we love our woods, that's why we bought the house, so we have no intention of taking anything down. So any, oh, and the homeowners association, I didn't want to print it out and bring you the covenants, but there are no requirements based on them in terms of, as long as it's not like higher than a foot for a pool, so I can maybe email those or whatever you'd like.
Any questions from the commission? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
At this time, we would invite any of the neighbors with standing to come up and, and speak in favor, if we have anyone. Please state your name and address as you come up.
My name is Susanna Morse. I live at 8294 Bridle Road, directly behind the house that is proposing this, and I've been to this meeting before about things further up the street. I guess to me, the green belt is not about trees so much as space, and when you look at the drawings of what they're proposing, I know it's a pool and a house, but all of that decking is permanent, so it looks to me like doubling a hard structure on that same amount of land. And when I bought my house, when we bought our house, we knew about the green belt. It was a consideration in buying the house, and even though, you know, there's space between us, we can still see them, and that's fine, but if there's suddenly this whole other structure in the backyard, and it, there is an incline, it's difficult to build. The pool that was built two doors up, I spent my entire summer listening to beep, 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 as they built those walls, the retaining walls. It's a big deal to put that in back there. I just, you know, my understanding is the green belt line is a line. It's not about trees, it's about space, and if this is approved, then the people who are two doors up are going to be like, well, why couldn't I do it? And then the people, this is a unique area. It's not, you know, it's not all around the neighborhood. It's a big gully, lots of wildlife, big crossings for deer, turkeys, everything else, and this would, it'd be a long summer. And it would mean that the green belt doesn't really mean anything. It's not about grass or trees, it's about space. And, and I would have to watch it all and hear it. We can hear everything between, through the gully, so it would disturb my peace, and it would disturb the value of my house, I think, and that's all I have about that. Okay? Do you have any questions for me?
I don't.
Okay, thanks.
Any other attendees wishing to speak in favor of the project? Anyone wishing to speak against the project? Okay, seeing none, we can open it up to commission discussion. Jonathan, here on the hot seat tonight, we'll start with you again.
Yeah, thank you. You vote me in the second hot seat now, I'm on the primary, right? I mean, you know, I struggled, honestly, you know, in the zoning change, it was defined as a green belt, you know? I understand we've had previous cases, you know, approved and not approved, but with this entirely within that green belt area, you know, it's just a struggle to, to really say, are we setting the precedence of the green belt? Does not truly mean anything in any application of this development or other places where we've put a, you know, other conditions of maintaining trees and landscaping, et cetera. So, you know, just wanted to express those concerns to the commission. As far as the plan, you know, it's very attractive as a homeowner, definitely, but I would then open up discussions to other commission members.
Ms. McBride?
Thank you. I understand Mr. Gothard's concerns. It is entirely within the green belt, and I feel like the green belt has kind of been ignored all of these years. However, having said that, I mean, if you look at the list of the patios and the pools and the gazebos and the barbecue areas, et cetera, that have been approved previously, with only one not being approved, and I understand that that one involved the removal of additional trees, I think it's a little difficult for us to draw the line in the sand now. I hate to say the ship kind of sailed, but, you know, if, if they're not taking down trees, and I, and I, and I agree with the, the woman who just, who spoke that lived on Bridle, that the green belt, to me, as a professional planner, is not, not just about the trees. It is definitely about the, the distance and about the, the space. It's just, I think it's going to be hard for us to say, no, here's the line tonight. Those are the only comments I have.
Thank you. Mr. Dungus?
Yeah, I have pretty much the same thoughts. It does seem like there has been, to some degree, a precedent set already that despite this covenant, if you come and ask, you can get something different, which seems to go against why it was in there in the first place. The fact that no existing vegetation will be disturbed, and it exists, it is currently just grass, I think makes it a little bit more easy to accept. I think the plan is great as well, you know, to, I think, mitigate maybe some of the neighbors' concerns about space and distance, if maybe additional vegetation for some screening could be, could be added to help with the, just the, the visual aesthetics of, of seeing the additional development. That's all.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment as well. Maybe, you know, once we get a grading plan and some landscape plan, if there could be some additional vegetation added to help screen the pool area from the neighbors in the back, maybe that will help relieve some of the concern. We could choose to reopen public hearing if you guys would like.
Sorry, I didn't know how it works.
I would move that we reopen public hearing. Do I have any?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Come on up.
I'm so sorry, the homeowner, Ian Ryan Hoskins, I, I just want to interject that the topography doesn't really do it justice. It's an enormous gully, and, and actually, I didn't realize until the, the survey was done, our property actually goes up well into, I believe, your yard, and they have three-tier decks that come down to it, and I was actually really surprised how close our property line comes to the bottom of their deck, so our property actually down a massive hill and then back up to their property, and I really, really hope that you guys are not the, the gun aficionados, but I call the police on the regular. There are people that shoot guns up until the absolute bare minimum, which is 9:00 PM in Hamilton County, I believe, and I've called a million times, and they're like, if they're discharging them safely, meaning they know where the bullets go, there's nothing we can do. So there are definitely a lot of sound things I wish were better, but.
With apologies, that's not relevant.
Fair enough, but I, but I think there's a huge buffer that, that I think the topography, I just wanted to speak to, and how far our lot actually goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, hearing's open. Come on up. Please, please come up, sorry.
My understanding from people who lived in my neighborhood far longer than I have is when those lots were created, and they do enter, it's the weirdest connection to, that my, his yard is in my backyard, too. It was created because they put those houses so close together, and they made an exception so that they could build that close.
and they made an exception so that they could build that close together according to your zoning laws. That green space, the fact that they have their property comes down into that area. I have that kind of property too, that I can't build on. The decks that I have in my backyard were built way before I owned the house, and my neighborhood did not make an agreement with the zoning board in order to be able to build and have those restrictions. So if you don't respect these restrictions, and they don't mean anything, I, I, it's kind of like, why did they even bother? Because it's, that space isn't about space, it's, it's, it's natural space that you guys have created to make people want to live in this area. And it's very quickly eroding. And grass is a living thing. So it's not about just the trees, they're falling down all over the place. But you are going to keep shrinking that in, and my decks can be removed. They're not hardscape, it's just wood, you know? It's not, I didn't build, there are no buildings down there. So it's, to me, it's very different. And if you go ahead with this, then you might as well just, you know, forget about the green space for everyone who lives up there, because everyone's going to want to build something.
Real quick while you're here, I, I missed earlier, so you're not, you're not actually part of this homeowners association, correct?
No, I live in Hidden View. So it's a different neighborhood that was built in the late seventies, and very different restrictions, but we have lots of restrictions too. And we all kind of bought there thinking that these rules were, would stay in place. And I will, if they don't, then, you know, when I sell my house, I will tell people different things about it. I mean, it's just kind of weird that it's, just because it looks, it's beautiful, it's lovely. But when they bought that house, they must have known about those restrictions. And everyone else who did in that neighborhood did too. So, that's it. Those lots are weird, but they were created for a reason to create space. There you go, thank you.
We'll close public comment again and reopen. I think we have a couple more comments before we close the commissioner discussion. And I'll step up. The question I had, or a comment that I had had to do with the landscaping plan itself, and we still don't see that. It seems like we, we're going to have issues with, I know the, the pool permit is going to be separate, but it would be helpful to see where the, the fence is going to go up that's going to protect, you know, the, the neighboring children and animals from falling into the pool, et cetera. And also to see what the elevation of the pool is actually going to look like. With the restrictions on the books citing a twelve inch elevation not to exceed, it looks like we're going to go far beyond that. So I think we're actually, I feel that we're just still missing some information to help make this decision. I do appreciate that the pool is being, you know, planned to be constructed within the open space. But there's some pretty significant grade involved, as you mentioned yourself, so I think that's the only comment I have left.
Could I ask one additional question, please, a sec? What is the, the minimum setback? Would, do we have that from, from the property line to the?
Are you referring to the houses or the accessory?
No, 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 I'm sorry, to the, to the proposed pavement area, the encroachment, I guess, from the encroachment of the green belt to the property line.
The encroachment?
The, what am I looking at?
So the, the pool house itself, or the pool pavilion, is only required to be three feet from the property line?
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm looking for is the dimension from the edge of the, for example, the stamped concrete where the fire pit is. From the edge of that pavement to the property line, the, what would be the rear property line.
Oh, the rear property line, okay. I can scale that up. So, I mean, from the edge of the, the fire pit area, that's that oval.
Yeah, that's the closest.
I think that's the closest. That's this area here.
Closest encroachment to the rear property.
Right, the closest encroachment, we're looking at, I mean, about a hundred and fifty feet.
Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion amongst the commission?
Yeah, I have another question. And this might actually be more for the applicant, but I'm curious as if any other orientation of the plan or pool house was given consideration, just to try to minimize the amount of projection into the green belt. You know, instead of having it run east-west, could it rotate and, and run north-south?
I think I can ask if they, what are their options?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay. And I believe the applicant said, you know, that everything was then too close to the house. But I'd have to look back in many minutes to know for sure.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I was just going to ask the commission members, I mean, do you all want to see additional information? I mean, I, I personally wouldn't mind having the plan that has got some dimensions on it, particularly to that, that rear property line. I mean, I appreciate Paul scaling it off, but that's just one point, you know? So I think if we were to approve something, I would want to have a concrete record of how far that is going into that green belt.
Yeah, I would, if I may, I think that'd be good to see. I would also maybe take into consideration, you know, the pool, I feel like, is less of a disturbance than the pool house, because it's going to be sticking up pretty high, and I think it will be more of a visual disturbance if it could be considered to maybe not do the pool house, or somehow if you needed a space like that to build it off of the existing house, still within, or outside of the green belt line, and could still have a paved area around it for fire pit, whatever. But that would be a consideration that I think would be a little bit easier to accept.
You know, I do believe that, you know, a grading plan would be helpful. You know, the commission talked about additional potential landscaping, if the applicant would consider that, you know, would be beneficial. You know, right now, we just have a side yard setback and no other sort of dimensional or even limits of construction. Yes, gray beams are an option and things to limit truly excavation, but there's still excavation required for this sort of scope of work. So understanding where those limits of the excavation would be helpful also.
Would it be helpful to summarize some of the things then that we're, we're looking for?
It sure would be.
Yes, so I think what we're, we're looking for then for the applicant's benefit would be a grading plan that would also show the limits of construction, a landscape plan that would indicate any proposed landscaping, and it probably would be helpful to show some of the trees that they have already surveyed right on the edge of that green belt that exists there today, so that we can look where their drip line is relative to construction. To have a site plan with dimensions on it, and then whether or not there are any other viable alternatives to the configuration that's being proposed.
And those all sound like reasonable requests, I think.
With that, I would make a motion then that we continue the public hearing in progress and look forward to seeing additional information.
I would second that.
Would you mind coming, Row?
Mr. Guyer? Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gafford?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Our next item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for a zone change request in case one, two thousand twenty-two Anderson for the property of nineteen forty-nine Wolfangle Road. Paul, if you'd like to.
Well, I would like to introduce our co-op for this semester, Riley McLaren, and he will make the presentation tonight.
All right. For case one, twenty-two Anderson, at nineteen forty-nine Wolfangle Road, the applicant is Doug Smith from McGill Smith-Huncheon on behalf of Beaver Creek Interests LLC for Our Lady of Mercy of Merrymont, Ohio, who is the property owner located at nineteen forty-nine Wolfangle Road. The applicant is requesting a zone change from OO Planned Office District to C Residence Community Unit Plan to construct a development located at nine, one-nine-four-nine Wolfangle Road. It's going to be a thirty-six lot, single-family residence subdivision with thirty-five buildable lots and one open space lot. That's approximately seventeen point two-five-six acres of land. It's around two units per acre. And that open space parcel is nine point five acres approximately, about fifty-five percent of the, the total site acreage. Okay, for the site history, the site was rezoned from B, single-family, to OO Planned Office in nineteen eighty-two by the Hamilton County Commissioners. This permitted the construction of the, the current hospital. In nineteen ninety-nine, there was a major modification allowing expansion of the cafeteria, outpatient diagnostic center, and creation of a linear acceleration room. Smaller modifications occurred between nineteen ninety and two thousand four. The next major modification occurred in two thousand five, which allowed for a five-story medical office and a three-story parking garage. If you want to go to the next slide. Another major modification occurred in two thousand twelve, allowing a patient tower addition, a new energy plant, and parking reconfigurations. The original zone change resolution contained a condition that the northeast parcel shall be used only for one single-family residence and to remain in effect so long as the development plan as amended was in effect. A pre-submittal open house was held on January fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Overall concerns regarding buffering, some utilities, including sewer and gas, and the site distance of the, the road coming out there onto Wolfangle. The case was heard by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission on February the tenth. They recommended the landscape buffer, a thirty-foot landscape buffer that was proposed on the northern side of the site, become its own parcel, and be maintained by a homeowners association. Additionally, Hamilton County suggested that the applicant modify their submission for A CUP or B CUP, but they also felt that C CUP fit in with the adjacent zoning. After that meeting, the applicant submitted updated plans, which reflected the separate open space parcel to be held by an HOA. There's the property map. Zoning map, so currently it is zoned OO with all single-family around it. Aerial map. You have your, your topography map. It should be noted that Clough Creek does run through the southern portion of the, the site. For the future land use map, it's currently slated for public, semi-public, and institutional zoning, but the two thousand twenty-two future land use has it for single-family.
Just real quick on that, so it's in process. The Board of Trustees did approve the comprehensive plan at their last meeting. The next review is by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission in April. But the township, the trustees did approve the comprehensive plan, so.
Here is the site plan, so you can see the thirty-five single-family lots, and then the thirty-six lot, which is the open space, creating that buffer up there on the northern side of the site. This is just a zoomed-in detail of the site plan. This shows the, the hills, the hillside, and some of the floodplains down there off of Clough, of Clough Creek. This is a rendering of the entrance. This is, this is not an updated plan, other than, just, just look at the, the landscaping on this one. This is looking south on Wolfangle from the proposed drive. This is for site, site vision. Looking north on Wolfangle. This is looking east towards Wolfangle from about the middle of the site. And then looking west towards Five Mile. Here is looking west down the property line. You can see where the, the homes and tower view, where their lots end, right there with that, that evergreen. Looking west, there's some of the existing vegetation that is proposed to come out. Just another view looking west towards Five Mile. Looking down that, that northern property line, you can see where those lots on Tower View abut. And this is the existing home that was held in the, the covenant on the, the zone change. Agency reports, the county engineer conducted a site distance study, and it was approved. They also included that grading must conform with Hamilton County typical sections. The grading plan must be approved by the county engineer, and right-of-way clearing needs to occur in the initial phases to avoid any utility relocation operations, and no landscaping in the right-of-way. There is no other comments by Hamilton County Regional Planning. The Metropolitan Sewer District just had conditional availability of sewers. Standard review comments from Hamilton County, no other comments. And then no, no comments here. So for findings, the two thousand sixteen Anderson Township Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map had this land slated as public, semi-public, and institutional to reflect the hospital to the south. Since the Anderson Township zoning resolution does not contain a public, semi-public institutional zoning district to reflect this land use, consistency with the land use plan is not required. Then it becomes a question of whether it is appropriate for the site to be zoned single-family. The current land use map does not specifically encourage single-family land use. However, the proposed two thousand twenty-two future land use map does have the area as single-family residents. In addition, we believe that it's consistent with the housing and neighborhood section. And if you want to go to the next slide. It's also consistent with the land use and development, just showing that it'll be a well-planned development with, you know, mixed, a mixture of, you know, housing typologies. The C CUP zoning designation is consistent with the proposed lot sizes and setbacks. The density is also compliant with C CUP zoning. The Anderson's Trail, the Anderson Trails Plan is consistent with this plan. The proposed development identifies interior sidewalks on both sides of the street, as well as a trail that descends down to Clough Creek, crosses the creek, and then meets up with a private drive off of State Road. This is an alternative to creating a sidewalk along Wolfangle. However, sidewalks are required on the Wolfangle frontage of the development. The Economic Development Committee agreed with Hamilton County in creating a separate open space parcel controlled by an HOA, but they, they think that the, the plan is good. The Anderson Township Tree Committee cited concerns of excessive tree removal along the southeastern border of the site. They recommended the removal of lots twenty-six through thirty to help protect mature trees. This would drop the toe. This would drop the total lots from thirty-five to thirty-two, removing the cul-de-sac there. They also cited on lots seventeen through thirty-five that the woods to remain line be extended to help protect some of the existing trees. And lastly, they suggested that tulip poplars and American basswoods be planted instead of maple trees. The recommendation, staff recommends approval of the request for a zone change from the OO Planned Office District to C CUP Residence District, as the proposed zone change to C CUP is consistent with the density of the surrounding property. The proposed use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and furthers the idea laid out in the Anderson Township Comprehensive Plan. The health and safety of the neighborhood and the township are maintained. The proposed use of the site provides an opportunity for the applicant to realize a reasonable profit from the applicant's use of the subject land. A sidewalk shall be used, shall be installed along the Wolfangle Road frontage and continue south across the creek to the Mercy Hospital property. A landscape plan shall be submitted for the final development review that helps to identify landscaping elements, and the utilization of a separate lot for landscape buffer along the northern border of the site. And then the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission recommended that the development shall be limited to thirty-five dwelling units, that the landscape buffer be a separate open space parcel, that detailed signage and lighting plans shall be submitted as a part of the final development plan, that further subdividing of the development shall be prohibited to assure conservation of all open space. The prohibitions and restrictions for the open space tracks shall be submitted as a part of the zoning compliance plan, that the dedicated open space tracks shall be owned and maintained by a homeowners' association, and that the development shall comply with the subdivision rules and regulations unless modified by the regional planning. And that is all.
Thank you.
Paul, did you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I wanted to add is that we did, last week, today's Monday, it was last week, we did walk with the engineer and to look at the possibilities of the trail connection that was mentioned as a suggested connection, so, I mean, they may have further updates on that, but that was all.
Thank you. Questions for staff this time? We'll start with Ms. McBride.
Of course you would, I don't have any questions.
There we go.
I don't remember seeing it here, and I don't want to open it all back up right now. Has there a final grading plan been submitted?
There's not a final grading plan. There is a grading plan submitted, or limits of disturbance, but it's not a final grading plan.
Okay. It just looked like, a couple of these sites look like there's some pretty steep grading on it, almost a swell or a ravine on some of it.
Yes, yes.
Sites thirty-four, thirty-five, and I think like eighteen, nineteen, maybe. Okay, so that was just a question. And then I noticed that the, this walking path differs on some of the drawings. I think the drawing that was submitted with the packet looked different than the layout of the walking path that was on the Hamilton County report.
And so, the applicant did submit revised plans after Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission to address some of their conditions and some of their concerns, so that's probably why there's two different, the plans that were submitted.
So the plans that we got in our packet are the most recent?
They were the most recent, and those are the ones that reflect some of the conditions that Regional Planning had placed on it.
Okay, that's all.
Mr. Gair?
I have no questions for staff.
What impact, your Regional Plan looked at A CUP and B CUP, what impact on the development would that direction have went, rather than the C?
The, I'll let the applicant speak to that, but the, it gets to the setbacks, the overall density is two units per acre, so it's well, it's well within the density range of what they're proposing to do for either B or C. It could actually go to B. It gets to the lot widths and the setbacks, the front yard setbacks of the homes. So those are more consistent with the C zoning, while the density is more consistent with the B zoning. So it was either go with the C setbacks or go with the B density, and they chose to present it as a C CUP.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, just one quick question. I know that the site distance study's been approved, but do we have any ETA on when that'll be ready for review by anybody for the connection on Wolfangle?
The site distance study? Was, there was some information in your packet regarding the study? It was part of the, their submittal. Yeah, that one right there.
Okay, thank you. I'll need to take a look at that, if I can. And then just, can you clarify Lot One? Are they preserving that house? It looks like the lot might be changing just a little bit, but is the house remaining as required?
The house that you probably saw in the images was not part of the subdivision, it's just to the north. So there's one house that faces Wolfangle, and then the next house faces Tower View. So that, there's, it's hard to see, but this lot right here is not part of the subdivision. There's a house that faces Wolfangle, and then there's a house here that faces Tower View.
Explains why the lot looked different.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
So Paul, on that Lot One and Two, those lot lines look like they're going all the way to the north property line, so they're not going to have the thirty-foot?
That is, that is correct. They were, because of the corner lot situation on Lot One, it limited the building area, and they were requesting to not have that buffer, the open space parcel extend across that lot, same way with Lot Two. The other difference is too, is that house that we were talking about faces Wolfangle, so this rear is looking at the side of the house that sits here, and then, of course, this is their rear yard here. So there's a different orientation there.
So they're showing the open space and the squiggly tree line and so forth on One and Two, though, and I'm assuming those areas are counted into the open space calculations, but we have no way of enforcing that, or?
I think we can, I mean, originally, it was proposed to be an easement, and then Regional Planning recommended that it be a separate parcel. I think they, you'll have to ask the applicant how this was left, whether it's going, proposed to be an easement or no.
I just don't want any more Ivy Hills.
Right. Same, same for us, that was why we also recommended that it be an HOA-owned parcel instead of a landscape easement.
And just, so then, that thirty-foot on the north is now wrapping around into the open space, that's all one, very odd-shaped parcel?
All one parcel that would be owned and maintained by the HOA.
Are there any other comments of staff right now? Okay, is there an applicant representative here tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Rick Palo, Aeronoff President Hunt, the attorney for the developer. Given the detailed staff report, our presentation frankly will be more of question and answer from you, as well as any residents, but I do want to point out, at least legally for the record, Mr. Drew was kind enough to point out the restriction, I guess, to me, three months ago, maybe. You know, how are you going to address this? And as Mr. Drewey in his staff report and Ms. Donovan had indicated that, through email correspondence and also meetings, that we also had done a hundred-year title exam on the property, and we found no restriction other than what Mr. Drewey in his staff report had pointed out. And I just do want to say for the record that the original restriction on this property was done by Rural Planning Commission. It was a county resolution in nineteen eighty-two, as opposed to Anderson Township Commission. So, I'm stating the obvious here, since that time, township zoning went into place. Under Ohio statutes, under five nineteen, obviously the township can enact their own resolutions, which they've done. We believe that this is the appropriate use under a CPUD, or C CUP. The density, as the staff report indicated, is a little over two units an acre, the open space at fifty-five percent, the setbacks, the lot sizes are all consistent with CPUD. And even though the land use plan has not, does not need to be complied with, one of the things in the discussions with Mr. Faruja, who I'm sure you all know, as well as Mr. Smith, who's the project engineer, one of the things, the driving force is behind the CPUD, as Mr. Drewey pointed out, was to be compliant with that, which would take place in the future land use plan. And so, one of the things also that I do want to point out, and both Mr. Faruja and Mr. Smith can go into this as a little bit more detail, all of the conditions and recommendations of both staff and Regional Planning Commission are fine and acceptable. The open space would be by separate lot. It would be detailed as a no-build area, both on the subdivision plan, as well within the declaration. Some of you, I think all of you are here, please correct me if I'm wrong, at the Carriage zoning hearing some months ago, and at that time, I think, Ms. McBride, you were the driving force behind that discussion, as to severely limiting of not, absolutely prohibiting the open space to be no-build areas. And that declaration would pretty much be the template, and this would be the, almost a mirror image of that, those restrictions in that declaration. No build, HOA maintained, HOA enforced, no tree removal, any of those particulars that you may have concerns with. Also, as far as the Tree Committee recommendation, yeah, we do disagree with that respectfully. You know, it is a fifty-five percent open space, and then removal of three lots, the development cost is the same, and you spread that over less than, over three lots. We don't think that that is necessary, especially given the open space. None of these trees will be removed, except for maybe some brush, as Paul pointed out in the walking trail. And so, there will be additional landscaping, the buffering that Mr. Smith can go over in more detail on the landscaping plan. So unless there are any questions from the commission or staff, that's all for me, and ask Mr. Smith to come up and go over the landscaping plan.
Thanks, Rick.
Good evening, my name's Doug Smith. I'm with McGill Smith Punchin, thirty-seven-hundred, Park Forty-two Drive, Suite One-Ninety-B, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four-one. I'd just like to thank staff for meeting with us last Wednesday to walk the property. I can say that we had good dialogue, we got good understanding of what staff was looking for with regards to the trail system and how it would connect the northern part of the project and the northern part of Wolfangle Road, as it goes north towards Clough Pike, how it could connect to the southern part of the township near State Road. You know, we walked the property, we came up with an idea of where alignment could go, how we could cross the creek, and how then we could extend south to an existing driveway that's owned by the Mercy property. So, we are willing to work with staff, work with the township, to come up with a good trail system that would extend this development to the south to an existing driveway that extends to State Road. With regards to the landscape, I can state that we did revise the plan, we submitted a detailed landscape plan. At the time of the open house meeting, there were some concerns, we just showed symbols for trees and that we were willing to, you know, buffer that area, and there was some question about, well, what kind of trees are you going to do, what are you proposing? So we did submit a detailed plan. I believe the Tree Advisory Committee did not see that plan, because the new plan does not reference any maples along that thirty-foot buffer strip along that north property line. I can tell you, the plan now proposes Norway spruce, white pines, some dogwoods, and some crab apples. Don't ask me the specifics on the crab apples, but that's what we're proposing. And then to answer your question, we are, we do propose that the thirty-foot strip along the north property line, excluding lots One and Two, be open space, will be maintained, and it'll be part of the overall open space lot. It will be maintained by a homeowners' association, as Mr. Palo alluded to. And to answer your question, the easement, we're proposing an easement across lots One and Two, a thirty-foot buffer easement. That easement area is not included in the open space area. So the true open space area is a little over nine acres, or the fifty-five percent. We went ahead and put the easement over lots One and Two, in an effort that we could provide some type of buffering from the side of the existing residence to the north there, so, you know, and the reason we did not include that thirty-foot open space is we go towards the east. If you're familiar with the site, you know Wolfangle's got a real bad bend in it, and we're restricted on where that new public road can have access and connect to Wolfangle Road, and we had no options to move south or north. I mean, we submitted a site distance study that was approved as part of your packet here. The applicant has also had a traffic impact study done, no turn lanes are warranted. That has all been approved by the Hamilton County Engineers' Office. So, with that said, we couldn't pull the roadway to the south to try to help with the buildable area for lots One and Two. So again, therefore, we've left that area in an easement, and not as part of the open space. And so, that's all I have for right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have of me.
We'll start again with you, Ann.
So I'm not sure if, what was the date on the landscape plan we were just looking at? Because this, the landscape plan that we have here, Doug, does have maples on it.
It does. I apologize then, because the landscape I have, and I looked at today, had Norways. What's the date on that plan?
Lot date of two-seventeen-twenty-two.
I apologize, but we're willing to work with you all to put the right material in there, the material that you would want. I think we're just trying to give you, give you and the residents an overall idea of, you know, we're going to put some deciduous trees, we're going to put some pines, and try to create a nice buffer for, not only the residents, but for the future development.
Sure. So I understand the issue about the Tree Committee's recommendation on the lots, in terms of expanding that existing woods to remain on lots seventeen to thirty-five to protect large, significant trees, what is the position on that?
Joe's more than willing to do that, also. Certainly agreeable.
That's all I had at the moment.
Mr. Dungus?
I thought I had read somewhere in one of these documents, correct me if I'm wrong, but that none of the proposed impervious surfaces would drain to the creek, is that correct? Would they all go to the detention pond?
Yes. Our plan is to take all the impervious area from the roadway. There will be some bypass from the rear of the houses.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, that will go to the creek, but the roadway and the front yards, our plan is to do a storm sewer collection system in the public roadway and take it to the east to the detention basin.
Will the gutters and downspouts from the house connect to that, or what's up there for that?
The front will, the rear will not.
Okay. And then, where the trail is going to go, I see it kind of zigzags, is the intent of that to minimize or eliminate any need to remove trees?
That trail that's shown on there was basically to follow topography. We'd be willing, you know, we're going to be willing to walk it, stake it, clear, and avoid trees, and work with staff to come up with a good alignment for that trail system. We just came up with a plan that, again, tried to respect the topography, so... So, you know, that trail can change, and we can work with staff, or to come up with a good location for that trail. That's not a problem.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Guyer, did you have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, so on the landscape plan that I have here, it looks like the buffering to the north, it looks like it stops at about lot 13. Is that intentional, or?
That's where the, that's where, approximately, that's what we have, is the natural tree line picks up and goes to the west. And, you know, if the tree line is good, substantial, good material, you know, we can supplement it, we're willing to do that, but for now, we just held it to where the existing tree line is.
Makes sense. That's all I have.
Mr. Gothard, did you have any questions?
I don't have any either. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, Ms. McBride, would you like to start the conversation off? Oh, no public testimony. I apologize. I am relatively new to this. If we have any members of the audience who are willing and interested in standing in support of the project, please come up to the microphone at this point. And see, none if we have any audience members who would like to come up and speak in opposition of the project, please come up at this point. See? Come on up, please state your name and address, please.
My name's Diane Cox. I live at 7491 Tower View Lane. And I just, you know, I want to try to wrap my head around your discussion about the density of the houses, and how it's two per acre, and it's really not. I mean, the majority of the acreage is open space. If you look at the property that's really just being used for housing, I mean, those are like quarter acre lots with 10 feet apart, and I don't know that that's consistent with what we have seen in our area. So, just my comment.
Any other existing members in the audience?
My name is Tom Breehob. I live on 7419 Kingston View Court, which is just down Wolf Angle, a little bit before I hear that Hamilton County has approved the exit street onto Wolf Angle. I am very concerned about that because of the hill right there, and you've got 35 homes, approximately two cars per home, that's 70 cars possibly coming out that exit onto Wolf Angle. That Wolf Angle is dangerous by itself, with buses going back and forth to the different schools. I don't know if that street can be turned, maybe moved a little bit farther north, or what, getting away from right there at the top of the hill. I've had close contact, or almost accidents at the top of that hill, with cars backing out on the car, street, or the homes on the right-hand side, also with wildlife, deer coming across the top of that hill. You don't see anything until you're right there. And with that street coming out, anybody turning left and going toward Clough could get rear-ended real easy, coming up Wolf Angle, going toward Clough. I'm concerned about that. The other concern is the walkway, and supposedly, the trail that goes over to Mercy Hospitals Street on the east side of their property. Right now, that isn't even a walkway down there, that's grassed-in area about halfway down after they've removed those homes. Are they going to improve that and make that a good walkway all the way over? Because that, if they're just doing it down across the creek and stop, that isn't going to be good either. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak at this point? Thank you.
At this point, if the applicant would like to respond to any of those questions or comments, you're welcome to.
Hi, my name's Joe Furuzia, and my address is 7861 East Kemper Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, So the sidewalk along the creek, we would locate that with the township, and our idea is to, it's a machine called a Fecan, it's like a, it's like a bush hog, but on steroids. And we would avoid the big trees and work our way around the brush, and that path is going to be a woodchip path that would be maintained by the homeowners association. And we are connecting that path up to the private drive to the east of the hospital. We are making that connection. The site distance, we have, we weren't required to, but I, we hired a traffic study company that worked with the county to come up with the site distance traffic study for this site. And from the very beginning to the end, it was acceptable. We actually exceed the distances that are required by the county, both north and south. Trying to think what else we had out there. The, yeah, the trees on the back of the lots, we're totally fine with restricting clearing on those, on those lots. I think that's it, unless you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, we, now we'll start a discussion with you, Ms. McBride.
Thank you. Having lived on Wolf Angle for 18 years, I know that it is a twisty-turny road and so forth. However, they have done a site distance study, and Eric Beck has approved that, so I think that's more firmly in his court than ours. I have some thoughts about the trees and the recommendations, obviously, of the staff and regional planning would be incorporated into anything. And I guess, Paul, I guess maybe I wanted to ask you, on lots one and two, is it possible, then, to put restrictions on how far north that they can clear on those two lots? I mean, I realize we're getting into Ivy Hills territory here, but I know.
So, on lots one and two, there really isn't vegetation on those lots currently. They would be, let me go to the aerial.
Paul, finally, real quick, does Mercy own that house?
They do, yes. So, as you can see, there is one tree, but this would be lot one here, and lot two would be where the garage is. So, the vegetation along the northern property line doesn't really get started until, well, there was a question about Mr. Guyer earlier, where the, you know, the new landscaping is and the existing vegetation.
Lot 13, I think, was discussed.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, the only other comment I would make is, it does seem to be consistent with a number of points of the upcoming comprehensive plan, in terms of providing different types of housing. I recognize these are small lots, but they're also the same size as a number of our old, older subdivisions, such as Sherwood Forest, and some of the states, and those type of developments that we have in the township. So, that's all I have at this time.
Mr. Dungus, did you?
I don't have much to add to that. I'm in agreement with the recommendations from the staff in Hamilton County. I think, you know, this is a pretty good use of the site, and though the, yeah, the lots may be smaller than the immediately surrounding areas, I think it's, appears to be a product that the township could use. So, that's all.
Mr. Guyer?
No, I'm in agreement with previous comments.
And Mr. Gothard?
Yeah, I mean, I think the previous case and the concern of clearing and beyond sort of the build zone is a concern, but the separate lot does help that, but maybe overlaying a conservation easement all over that entire green space parcel may be added protection? Just something that I think staff and the developer or our motion could look at also. Other than that, really have no additional comments. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I find myself in general agreement as well. I know this is, you know, a big open space, and this is a development of that open space as it current existence, yeah, existing conditions are, but with the zone changes, it's about as by the books, almost as of right development as it gets, and I think they've done a good job presenting it, and I'll have further comments.
Yes, one more question.
Absolutely.
Paul, so Jonathan brought up a good point about a conservation easement. Is that something that?
So, as Mr. Palo alluded to during his presentation, he helped prepare the HOA documents for the carriages to address removing the trees in the, in the open space for that PUD. And I believe he's modeling the HOA documents for this parcel similar to that. And we had our attorney review those, and was comfortable with the way that it was written, that those trees would be preserved, not just the area would be maintained as open space, but it would, the trees would also. So if you wanted to place a similar condition, I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion amongst staff, commission?
Just one thought on that question, if, I guess my concern or question is, if it's given that same designation for conservation, could it be landscaped, or does it have to be left alone?
I think they, the intent was to preserve the existing vegetation. It didn't necessarily say that they couldn't add vegeta, or add trees into it, but it was to protect the existing trees.
Okay. Okay.
We'll see, no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
And then, just, I'm, one, because this is a community unit plan, so the final development plan will come back to you, so you can, you know, see some of those finite details, you know, at the final development plan, if you wanted to request it.
Still welcome to a motion.
Thank you. I would propose a motion for the commission's consideration on Zone Change Case 1-2022 Anderson for the property at 1949 Wolf Angle Road, that we recommend approval of the request to the Board of Trustees, subject to all of the recommendations of the Anderson Township staff, items one through six, all of the recommendations of the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission, items one through seven, that the final landscape plan that would be submitted as a part of the final plan for the CUP would include the upsizing of the proposed evergreens to eight to nine feet at planting, that the maple trees that are proposed and indicated on the preliminary landscape plan be revised to include tulip poplars and American basswood per our Street Tree Committee, as well as the inclusion of the NZA 3000 standards for planting and maintaining the new vegetation, that the proposed 30-foot buffer along the north property line be a separate parcel as required by Regional Planning Commission, that the existing woods to remain designation be expanded on lots 17 through 35 to protect any large significant trees, as recommended by our Tree Committee, and that, I can't remember my handwriting here, we surveyed the lots on, surveyed the trees on lots 13 through 16 on the north property line, where no vegetation is proposed on the current landscaping plan, and add any plant material to supplement those that might be needed, and that the HOA documents be submitted to the township for review and approval relative to the preservation of existing vegetation, and that the location of the proposed trail is to be approved by staff, and that it would be woodchip maintained by the HOA and connect to the existing Mercy path.
And point of clarification, real quick, the parcelization of the open space is still exclusive of lots one and two, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
I will second the motion.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as discussed earlier, we have a slight modification tonight, to tonight's agenda, so we're going to hear item six prior to item five, which is a quasi-judicial hearing for a planned unit development request of Case 1, 2022, PUD Views of Coldstream. Before we embark upon that discussion, I do have, I can go ahead and read this now, right? Yeah. It is quasi-judicial hearing, so I do need to read this aloud, and bear with me, because it'll take me a minute. First, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees, and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not wish to hear opinions, just facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in, and all witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application, the applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time, after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone, and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Great, thank you very much. And with that, we'll open the hearing for Case 1, 2022, PUD Views of Coldstream.
Thank you. The applicant is Richard Palo Esquire from Aaronoff, Rosen, and Hunt, on behalf of Coldstream Estates Development LLC, who is the property owner. The location is off of Ayers Road, and the current zoning, this is parcel, all the parcels have been consolidated. So... Estates Development LLC, who is the property owner. The location is off of Ayers Road, and the current zoning, this is parcel, all the parcels have been consolidated, so this is parcel 14, book 500, page 183, and parcel 14. The current zoning is AA, single family residence, so the request is to approve a planned unit development application, a PUD, to allow the construction of a seven lot, single family subdivision with a private drive, which is also gated. The entire parcel size is approximately 35.873 acres, 7.18 acres of open space, which is approximately 20%. There's approximately 143 feet of frontage on Ayers, and the topography is relatively flat where the street, and then there's a sharp decrease in grade down south toward the river. So this is the proposed development, in a nutshell, seven, single family lots, 35.873 acres developed, and that's a mistake, and the, as far as the open space, it should be 7.18 acres of open space, a gated private drive, minimum lot size of an acre, front yard setback is still consistent with the AA zoning. The only difference here, the front yard setback would be from the private drive versus the right of way, and on, with the private drive. Side yard setbacks and rear are all consistent, and the minimum lot width is all consistent with the double A zoning district. Lot number one is the only lot with frontage on a public street, and the rest would be, just have frontage on the private drive, and then no sidewalks are proposed on the interior street since it is private, however, they are proposing sidewalk along the frontage of Ayers. Just a little bit of history, this was, it has already been approved as a subdivision, a regular subdivision, but it will be required to go back to regional planning if the PUD is approved. And again, this was approved in early 2021 for a regular subdivision with seven lots on a public street, but since they are requesting a private drive and a gated private drive, it is required to have a PUD approval, and it would be re-reviewed by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. So at the January 2022 public hearing, the applicant requested a continuation. And again, all of these parcels have been consolidated, but to, this is Asbury as it goes down the hill toward Kellogg, this is Ayers, the portion that goes back to the Riverview Estates subdivision and Park Place, this area here is the Coldstream Country Club, and there is a private drive, Cardinal Terrace, that's off of Asbury, and that's where these homes are accessed from. All of the surrounding zoning is AA, which is single family residential, minimum of an acre lot. There is some retail zoning at the corner of Asbury and Kellogg, and then H along the riverfront. There's also a small portion of B that was carried over from Hamilton County zoning way back in the 40s. So this is the aerial, again, this is the Coldstream Country Club, this is Ayers that goes back to Riverview Estates. This subdivision, this is the old driveway that went back to the Williams Estate, the old home, but the new street follows pretty much that same alignment. This area up here is proposed to be the carriages of Coldstream, that was approved also as a PUD. This is the topography of the site, and as you can see, there is a sharp decrease in grade to the south and then to southwest. So the area proposed for this subdivision is outlined in the dark line here. The private drive comes in off of Ayers, and then the seven lots are on the southern side of the private drive, so this would be lot one to lot seven with the detention. The area that's highlighted in green is proposed to be open space, which would be a separate parcel maintained by the HOA. There is a limit of clearance, or no disturbance also, similar to the subdivision we just heard, Sanctuary of Ivy Hills. There's been a lot of discussion about this tonight, so that is proposed also as part of this PUD. And again, the impetus for bringing this back to the zoning commission was for the gated private drive. This is the landscaping plan for the entrance into the subdivision. These are some of the aerials, the drone shots that we took. This is looking back to the Riverview Estates subdivision, the river is right here to, off of the slide. And the street was already put in, so it was designed for a public street standard in, in preparation of the seven lot regular subdivision, so it has already been installed, the curbs have already been installed, but this would be converted to a private street and maintained by the HOA. Again, this is looking generally in south and southeast. This is looking toward what will become the carriages, the PUD that was approved by the zoning commission last year. This is the cul-de-sac, so this is looking south, southwest. This would be the entrance into the, the development, this is where the private, the gate would be, and as you continue on Ayers, that continues to the Riverview Estates subdivision. These are just other shots of the area. So in reviewing a PUD, this is what is defined in our zoning resolution for the purpose of a planned unit development, is to encourage efficient use of land and resources, promoting greater efficiency in public and utility services, orderly improvement of property in accordance with community plans, and to encourage innovation in the planning and building of all types of development without detriment to neighboring properties. The PUD regulations are intended to permit property to be used in a manner or intensity not permitted as of right by underlying district regulations. The only difference with this request is that they are meeting all the setbacks, they are meeting the lot areas, they're meeting everything except a public street versus a private street, and because it is a private, the lots don't have frontage on a public street, which is also a zoning requirement, and we'll go through the areas that they're not in compliance, and that's really the only area, is lots two through seven do not have frontage on a public street, but it is not required as part of the PUD if a PUD is approved. But these, again, they're meeting the setbacks of the AA zoning district, the lot width, the setbacks, et cetera. So in reviewing a PUD, we look at the applicable sections of the Anderson Plan, our comprehensive plan. We looked at transportation, which discusses sidewalks, they are proposing a sidewalk on Ayers, which will connect to the sidewalk at the carriages. The township will be comprised of high quality neighborhoods with diverse and well-maintained housing, provide a variety of housing options. That, we did not, there was a description in the applicant's letter about the sizes of the homes and the, and the price points of the homes, and they seem to be consistent with Riverview Estates neighborhood. Applicable plans, we're also looking at quality of life, and this is where the evaluation of the quality of the open space and the green spaces and new development, so they are providing over seven acres of open space in the 35-acre development. We do have concerns about the no clearing line because we don't know how that will be enforced, and as you can see, there's been struggles with that over years. Land use and development, well-planned community, natural, environmental resources, and this is important specifically for this area of the township because of the steep topography and the existing vegetation in this area. So there is seven acres of open space at the, at the lower end of these lots, but it doesn't necessarily encompass the rest of the lots. But you do have to take into consideration with a, a standard subdivision that was already approved, there wouldn't be any controls in place to preserve those hillsides. So the recommendation is approval because it is consistent with the density of the surrounding area, it's consist, it's consistent with the vision and goals of our comprehensive plan adopted by the township trustees, the use, single families compatible, the landscape buffer along Ayers Road will provide adequate buffer from the road for the private drive, the phasing and timeframe is unknown at this point, the proposed development served adequately efficient, efficiently by essential public facilities, however, this was routed to our sheriff and our fire department regarding the gate, and the fire department did say that would cause a delay to get to those homes. And then there are no historical features on the site anymore, there was a historic chapel, but that has been removed from the property. Modifications in the zoning or other regulations could be warranted provisions, we're in place to ensure there's adequate dedicated open space. Again, we talked about sidewalks, they're not proposed on the private road, but they are proposed from this subdivision along Ayers to tie into the existing neighborhood. It is single family, consistent with surrounding properties, it should not be detrimental to present and potential uses. And again, it's already been approved by regional planning, it will be reviewed again if this PUD is approved. Number 14 talks about the PUD requirements, the original plan last month, we didn't feel met any of the requirements of a PUD, but there has been some modifications since it was brought before you, and we feel like those modifications do take into cons, into account regulations or requirements for a PUD. And then number 15, this standard looks at the slope, while there's not, the, the slope is not proposed to be disturbed for the homes, what you saw in the photos, that's what will be disturbed, and that what, is what has been disturbed. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Paul.
This time, we'll start with you, Mr. Dungus.
Okay, first question, or I guess clarification, so the subdivision has been approved, they could, I guess have, but they could build everything on these drawings as shown if it wasn't for the gate.
Correct. In the private drive, it would need to be a public drive and no gate.
Okay, so because they want to add the gate, it is allowing additional scrutiny or review to the plan?
That is correct.
It was mentioned in the report that the private gated drive up the street was allowed because it was a minor subdivision, and it didn't go through the same process?
Correct.
Can you explain the difference?
So a minor subdivision is the creation of five or fewer lots, a major subdivision, which is subject to Hamilton County subdivision regulations, is over five lots, so six, six or more. Riverview Estates was a major subdivision and approved as such and went through Hamilton County. There were, there was additional land at where that private drive start, starts at the end of Ayers that was not considered part of the Riverview Estates subdivision, so it came in as a minor land division, I think on two separate occasions, there were two or three lots created and then two or three more lots created, so it wasn't subject to the county subdivision regulations, which would have required a public street and the gate wouldn't have, that's how the gate was allowed to go in.
Okay. And then the open space versus no clearing zone, I guess just to try to define the two, the open space, is it being proposed to be maintained by the HOA?
I believe the open space is proposed to be a separate lot and maintained by the HOA.
Versus the area between that and the no clearing zone would still be on each individual lot, it would just have this restriction on it that you couldn't build on it?
Correct.
Without coming back here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, they're not proposing that, and with the PUD, it's, it's, it's different than the sanctuary case that you heard, because that was a zone change, this is not considered a zone change, so typically a PUD would not come back before the zoning commission, unless it was specific conditions that were not being met, then they could request a major adjustment to their PUD plan, it's a little bit different process.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Guyer?
No, I, I agree with staff's findings, and I, I think it's a well thought out plan, so I have no comments.
Mr. Gothard, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions of staff, thank you.
And Ms. McBride?
Just two, um, did the tree committee review the landscaping plan for the, for the front?
No, they didn't review this one.
And then, um, the other question I had was on page four, the staff findings, number 12, it says the development may not be detrimental to present and potential uses.
So, well, there were two things with the, the houses, the, the size, the, the lots, everything is consistent with that. I think we were mostly concerned with the difference between the open space and the clearing limits.
Okay.
And, and the reason with the clearing limits, we heard with the carriages, the PUD, there are homes below this that come in off of Asbury, and grading and removal of the vegetation definitely can impact those homes down below, so that, that's kind of where we were saying may not, and I think we need some clarification on how best to preserve that hillside.
Okay.
The open space parcel does prevent further development of those lots, because theoretically those lots are large enough that they could be subdivided if they had frontage off of Kellogg or out to Asbury, you know, a panhandle could be made anywhere, and while it is steep, there are homes that are down there, so anything could be constructed down there. So the open space parcel does prevent those from being developed, but then the clearing limits doesn't necessarily prevent someone from coming in and removing the vegetation.
Here we are in Ivy Hills, got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Paul, the only question I had, it seems clear, but I'd want to ask anyway, there is no other mechanism by which you can install a private gate and a private drive for a development like this?
Correct.
Okay.
We had several discussions about that, yes.
Okay, at this point, if the applicant is here and would like to come up and make a presentation?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Rick Palo, Aaronoff, Rosen, and Hunt, representing the developer, Joe Faruja is the developer, and Rich Arnold with Miguel Smith is the project engineer. And I'm going to be very brief, since I'm not here to give testimony. One of the things that drove this, if not one of the things, the primary reason why we're even here is, there is a very well-known, frankly, Cincinnati family that have not entered into a contract yet, but had approached both Mr. Faruja and Zickel Holmes, who would be building their homes, to acquire four of the lots, to have it a private gated community. For reasons, you can connect the dots yourselves, why they wanted to make it a private gated community, that is absolutely the only change to the plan. One of the things I do want to point out is, and I want to thank Mr. Drew and Ms. Donovan for their time to get to this point, because when we were here a month or so ago, it was not at that point. One of the concerns that Paul had pointed out is, well, it can't be subdivided, so that's why we came up with the open space. Well, what about the no build area? Even though they're part of the lots, those will be restricted, again, in the declaration with enforcement to the HOA. They won't be separate lots because we didn't want, and again, Joe can, can speak to this more clearly, but it will be specifically delineated on the plan, it will be in their contract, subject to no build areas. I can't even talk to Joe about including that as an exhibit on their deed, maybe, and it would have an easement over all of those lots to the HOA to enforce the no build area. And if you remember the carriages, it's similar to what was done at that point in time. It was delineated, it was marked, the homeowners will know, the HOA can enforce, so the no build area. And I think that, those are the two issues that I saw under no clearing that needed some indication as well as, from us, as well as, Paul had indicated on item number four, that the seven acres, it cannot be developed in the future, it's going to be pretty much the same thing as we had talked about at the last hearing. Mr. Faruja can talk a little bit more about the technology on, on the gate, as to how that's progressed. The old days, we used to have knock boxes where they literally knock it off when the police and fire want again, you know, want to get in there and, and to the gate, and that has changed significantly, I want to have Joe speak to that.
All right, again? On the gate, I'm not, I'm a layman on the gate, but what I'm being told is the, not only the fire and police departments will have a way of opening the gate, but also mail delivery and trash pickup will also be able to open the gate. And then I was told that some of the delivery companies... And then I was told that some of the delivery companies, like FedEx, Amazon, have the same, have the same ability to open gates on private drives.
So Joe, that would be remotely?
Remote, yes. And we do, yeah, you showed, you're showing them the plan. So what we are intending to do is, in that, in one of the photos, we don't have the entrance in yet, the roadway. So we're going to do that type of entry, very elaborate stamped concrete or heavy pavers, and then the gated, the gates and the columns.
And that's just a rendering, it's not for the record?
And we show examples on the one side there, gates and different types of pavement. And we were, we're in the process of doing that paving, you know, getting that scheduled to be installed.
Joe, what's the price point?
The price point of these homes are two, two million, five to three, five, very expensive homes. And we are, I'm going to, we are under contract on four of the lots with the one family in one individual lot with someone else.
Does anyone from the commission have questions for the applicant? We'll start with Mr. Dungus. Sorry.
Why aren't the sidewalks shown now? Is it mentioned that you'll work with the township, but why not?
Oh, this is a private street, and there's no other sidewalks in the subdivision, except the Coldstream Club Drive, which is up a ways on the curve there. And on a private street, you're not required to do sidewalk. And it's only seven lots.
On Ayers?
Oh, on Ayers, yeah. We're going to, on our frontage on Ayers, we are installing that sidewalk, or we'll work with the township, because the sidewalk really doesn't go to any, anywhere. We might work with them to just pay for the sidewalk, give the money to the township. But that's something that we can work out with the, either, I don't care, we can either put it in, or we could, if it makes sense to just donate the money, then we'll do what the township requests.
Okay. Then the, the open space, why, why just seven acres? There still seems to be a lot of area back there that is steep grade and likely undevelopable, so why not?
It's, it is undevelopable. It's mainly just to have a large lot. So we're required to have one acre lots. These are anywhere from, I believe, four acres to seven acres, ten acres actually, I think, on lot seven. So it's something we've been promoting, and that's why. And the clearing that we've done out there is, is complete. There's no other clearing necessary. We've cleared over the hill enough to where you can have a nice river view for all the lots, so there's no need to do any additional clearing. And we do restrict that area. It's a twenty percent slope. It's very steep, I mean extremely steep, so there's no need to do anything on that hillside. But we wanted to keep it part of the lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Guy.
Question regarding the eight-foot landscape buffer. I guess who would maintain that? Might be a question for staff.
So both the hillside and the open space is just woods, and there's no need to do anything in there unless, you know, there's a fire or something.
Okay.
But it's just natural wooded area.
I think Mr. Guy is referring to the eight-foot piece up at the front of, by lot one.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot one.
There's a small eight-foot landscape buffer.
Oh, oh.
And separating those two lots, if you can clarify.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't know where you meant. Okay, so the gentleman on, it's actually John Pauly is his name, butts up to our property. And we decided we just plant a buffer between our lot and his lot, just as a courtesy to him. And us, it also helps our lot not look onto his patio and pool area.
So is the, is the maintenance of that?
That'll be.
Buffer on lot one?
That'll be part of lot one's responsibility, yes.
And then, not to harp on the sidewalk again, but, so the sidewalk that will connect to the sidewalk on Ayers, will that just stop at the drive into this, or would it continue? Could, I guess, if you're walking along Ayers, and you just stop, and you can't get in?
So the sidewalk is, we have a very small frontage on Ayers Road, so we're, that their sidewalk requested there. Or possibly, the money would be given to the township. And it's, it's kind of up in the air. We'll do whatever we work out with the township. We don't, we don't have any issue with that.
Mr. Goethe, did you have any questions?
On the submitted landscape plan, it talks about the stacked limestone would be a minimum of three feet. Do you have an idea what the maximum's going to be?
Well, we're, it's, I would say, I know where he's referring to, it's probably three to four feet. And there's a manhole there that we cannot, it's a, it's a valve chamber, actually, for the low-pressure force main, and we can adjust that, okay? I can't, I can raise it, but I can't lower, and it's already higher than we want. So we want to do a limestone dry stack wall around that, and then landscape it. And we want all this to blend. We're redoing the landscaping for the Riverview existing subdivision with the entrance of the new seven-lot subdivision. So it'll all be, it'll all look, conform with each other. It'll look nice.
So it'll be no higher than the utility?
No higher than the manhole, yeah. And I would, I'm going to say four feet. It's, I don't think it's any higher than that.
You know, a lot of discussions about the no build zones and no clearing and all that. What sort of avenues are you looking to put in place to guarantee those sort of things?
So we'll have.
Because unbuildable today does not mean unbuildable in twenty years.
I understand. So we'll have that in the HOA docs. And again, the township will review those docs.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McBride.
Just a couple questions. Why, why a private street? I mean, obviously, it raises increases the value of the lot.
They, they want, they want a private, they want a gate, and the only way that we could do the gate is to go private street.
Yeah, no, I understand that piece, it was just more the, why the gate?
Privacy.
Yeah, is that security and privacy, I guess?
Privacy. And, and I can, and I just, last week, we had a meeting on a private drive at the end of Ayers that's not gated to the other side. And our meeting was about something totally different, but the homeowner, and there's only, at this time, there's only one homeowner that lives on that private drive. And she goes, you would not believe how many people come up this driveway every day, especially on the weekends, and it's not gated. And I guess she, I have a feeling they're, when I, they're going to want to gate that private drive. But that's the reason, just privacy.
And then you mentioned that the lots all had river views. Those trees grow up, and.
It's cleared well below, it, yeah.
Okay, so they've got quite a way to go.
They have a long way to go.
To obstruct river views, okay.
Right.
And then you mentioned that the post office would have access to the key, whatever the deal is.
Yes.
Won't they be using, won't they be installing like a gang mailbox or something?
Well, they're, no, I, well, it's up to the post office.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, I would, I would, you know, I don't know if we would want to put it outside or inside.
Right, okay, and that's up to you and up to the post office. If there's any questions that I have.
That was actually my question, Ann, so I don't, I don't see any further questions for the applicants.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, if you'd like to start the discussion here. I, I'm not going to let anyone testify tonight. I don't, I don't understand why I keep doing that. Sorry, everybody that's come out tonight. So we will open this up to testimony. And if there are any members of the audience who would like to come up and speak in favor of the proposed development, please feel welcome to do so now. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and speak in opposition of the development, please feel welcome to do that now. Please state your name and address as you come up.
Hello, my name is Cindy Coleman-Voss, and I live at 128 Asbury, and I've got some pictures to share.
As long as there's one for each of us.
Yeah, plus two, one of each.
Perfect, thank you.
So our, our house happens to be one of the homes below the lots, specifically lot six and seven. And during the previous approval of the concept vision with this, we asked and was answered in the affirmative whether they would have management for landslide and also stormwater. On February seventeenth, which you see in the pictures, that was a result of the rain event from that day, and we can, as you can see on our property, there was lack of stormwater retention management, and would like that to be addressed as we go forward with the approval of this development.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other audience members present who would like to speak in opposition to the development?
Hello, Brad Smith, I'm at 170 Asbury Road, and my lot is one on Cardinal Terrace, just south and west of the new open space. And I am in, in favor of the private gated road, that's not an issue. I think the other two elements of the PUD are very concerning, though, regarding the open space and what's called the, the no clearing area. So the big part there is, what's that definition? And I think from what has happened in the past, the other PUD that was approved on the north side of this development, there was verbiage that was put in, I have not seen it, but very strict defining definition of no clearing, no removal of trees, et cetera, things like that. So just to expound on what Cindy said and the pictures that you see, from the existing clearing that was performed already, the watershed effect off of that is dramatic, what is coming down onto the properties of Cardinal Terrace. So we certainly don't want to see any more vegetation removed, let alone the open space being a non-development, certainly any structure in there. That part of the plan, as it shows there, the, actually, the grade is either ECE, which is a twenty-five to forty percent slope, but most of it is EDF, which is forty to sixty percent. That is a severe slope. And the concern is with this whole area is, of course, landslides. There's been a number of landslides over the years that have been very detrimental. It involves putting in peering, very expensive peering, and there's, in just the last ten years, well, first of all, on Asbury, the county put in a hundred and sixty new piers along Asbury with the repaving that was done last year. But just down Asbury Road, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven homes have needed peering walls, and these are very expensive, hundreds of thousands of dollars for a homeowner to put in. So the concern here is with the landslide, that puts a tremendous burden on the people downhill from that. And another issue that has not been discussed, but I think is really an important element of this, is this development, it's starting problems already with the watershed, and soil now has been disturbed, vegetation, very good possibility of landslides in the future. And the only recourse on this is litigation. So this is pitting neighbor against neighbor, Anderson Township resident against Anderson Township resident, to get into these lawsuits. And these are not small lawsuits, these are huge lawsuits, and there's been a number of in the area already, hundreds of thousands of dollars of litigation. So at this point, as far as the approval tonight, I'm hoping that you will, again, have the verbiage for the open space and defining this no clear zone as very strict, specific verbiage as far as removing vegetation. We do understand that the enforcement of this is difficult, again, falling back to probably litigation. So as Anderson Township has less and less available development lots, these lots that have severe slopes are an issue, which we've all seen in Anderson Township, and I'm hoping that you can be very strict with verbiage at this point with approval of this PUD, so we hope to reduce or eliminate that. And I also wanted to say I do support Cindy's testimony, too, what she, she.
Thanks. Are there, are there any other audience members here tonight who would wish to speak in opposition to the proposal?
Hi, my name's Amber Lewis, I live at 126 Asbury Road, and just wanted to come up here and support the testimony of Brad, as well as Cindy. We have seen a lot of watershed damage. We continue to see mud sliding down our driveway as a result of improper or maybe not enough water remediation above us at the seven lots. One question that I wanted to ask, which may have been answered, might have missed it, for the open space that we have outlined here in green, who will own that? Will that be owned by each individual parcel owner, or is that going to be owned by the HOA, or do we have an idea there?
We can let the applicant answer that question, but I think it is the HOA that's going to own that.
Okay. And then I would want to reaffirm Brad's testimony as well, as to make sure that we get that verbiage in there, that that open space be not disturbed, because the very well-clearing of the lot is causing detrimental damage to our property down on Cardinal Terrace. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience members who'd like to speak in to opposition of the proposal? Seeing none, we can go ahead and close public testimony and open staff discussion, or I'm sorry, commission discussion. Mr. Dungus, would you like to start the discussion?
Yeah, I think first off, it's, it's interesting, the situation that, I, there's no opposition to what's requiring this PUD, which is the gate, but I think it's advantageous to the community and the township that this request or change is prompting or allowing additional scrutiny and, or allowing maybe additional influence on the development, which is obviously not, not a bad thing. But again, I don't hear any opposition to the gate, so all of these concerns and issues I see as potentially still occurring whether we approve this or not. I think it's very unfortunate that there are major erosion and water control issues. To me, looking at these photos, it appears that this could be a SWIP violation, so the contractor should have a permit for disturbing the earth and making sure that they've got appropriate means in place to prevent this type of erosion, and if those are not maintained appropriately, there are other actions more appropriate than what this. what this commission can do to mitigate that or hold the contractor accountable. So again, I think what's occurring or what's being asked for could happen regardless, and I don't see any opposition to the gate itself. And if that's what the property owner wants, then I think that that seems reasonable. And that I think that there are other concerns on this lot that can be addressed elsewhere. That's all.
Mr. Guyer?
I have no further comment.
Mr. Gothard? Ms. McBride?
Yeah, just to echo my colleague to my left, yeah, because quite frankly, I mean, they could just do it as is and they could do all the clearing that they wanted to clear and we would have, you know, as long as within Hammond County's purview, we would have nothing to say about it. So I think this actually gives us more control over that. And if the folks want their privacy and their, you know, seclusion, then, you know, this is our win on that part of that, so.
Yeah, similar, I mean, we've already seen multiple examples in one evening, I don't know what the coincidence is there. But this, you know, clearly opens up an opportunity for the township and us as a body to kind of look more closely at those HOA regulations and learn from the past. And I think we'll probably do that going forward with this. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll close commission discussion.
I would make the motion that we approve case one dash, I'm sorry, one dash, 2022 PUD, the views at Coldstream on Eris Road, that we approve that request, subject to, I'm sorry, based on the PUD standards contained in section 4.1G and staff's recommendation of those standards. Also conditioned on the fact that the HOA documents be reviewed and approved by the township and that they include the standards with regards to clearing and open space and specific definitions and how those are to be maintained and controlled.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our final case this evening is a public-
Mr. Chair, if I might, I need to recuse myself from this case. The original applicant is a client of mine and I've done a lot of work for Panera, so I need to recuse myself and I will excuse myself as well. Thank you very much.
The next case is a public hearing for a zone change request in case one, 2022 Anderson for the property. I am looking at the wrong one. A major modification to a final development request in case one, 2019 Anderson, major modification for the property of 8501 Beauchamp Avenue. Staff, if you'd like to make your presentation, please, thank you.
Thank you. The applicant is Brian Bender with Civil and Environmental Consultants on behalf of BWR Real Estate LLC, who is a property owner. Location is at 8501 Beauchamp Avenue and the zoning there is EE Plan Business District. The applicant is requesting a major modification to the approved final development plan. And this site in particular was split into two phases. The second phase has not been heard yet by the zoning commission, but phase one included the construction of a new Panera Bread drive-through restaurant, approximately 3950 square feet with outdoor dining and then associated construction of new parking areas, access provided through Beauchamp Avenue. So the zoning commission reviewed this in December of 2021. We'll just go straight to the case history. We'll move on to the zoning commission. So the zoning commission heard this at the December 2021 meeting and approved case one, 2019 FDP Phase One. And that included a 35-foot wide berm, 10-foot tall with a solid vegetated screen at the southern property line. And the detention basin was changed to an underground detention basin. So after that meeting, the applicant, the property owner, met with some of the residents to the south along that border and discussed that mound. And had some of the residents express a concern with removing the existing vegetation in order to put in that tall of a berm and the extensive grading that would have to take place. So they had an agreement or discussion to replace that mound with keeping the existing vegetation as much as possible and then filling in with other landscaping. So that is the request tonight, is to evaluate those conditions that were specific to that berm along the southern portion of the property. And since that was a specific condition, it does require review by the zoning commission to change or modify that. So just to refresh your memory, this is the site in question off of Beauchamp Avenue on the south side of Beauchamp Avenue. And then this is Sunmont Drive to the south, and these were the homeowners that met with the property owner. The zoning has been changed to EE Plan Business District. This is the aerial of the site in question. The topography map, there is a slight decrease in grade to the south, and that's where the proposed detention basin would be. It would tie into the existing detention for Sunmont. Or stormwater system for Sunmont, I should say. This was the site plan for Panera that was approved. And this was as Phase One, and this would be the complete development once it is finished. The Buffalo Wings and Rings office building would be located here. This is the Panera drive-through. And the additional parking toward the rear of the site, this is the southern border, southern property line of the site, and that's what is at question. This is the proposed landscaping, the change to what was presented to you in December. So the existing vegetation would be preserved as much as possible. There would be some clearing in order to put in the, the detention basin would be in this location underneath, I'm sorry, in this location here underneath the parking lot, and it would be piped to an existing stormwater pipe on the Sunmont Drive. And there is an easement for that that would ultimately tie into the Sunmont stormwater system. And then the area that would be cleared would be replanted with a mixture of vegetation and trees. So these are just some of the site photos along Beauchamp Avenue, we won't focus too much on that since most of the changes in the back. And these are some of the existing trees that the residents would like to see maintained. So we did put the entire resolution in the presentation because with the final development plan review, we're ensuring consistency with the zone change conditions. And so some of these have not been met yet just because we haven't issued a zoning certificate for the plan pending the outcome of tonight, whether their plans change or not. So number one was referring to dedication of additional right of way, and that is compliant on their plans 60 feet from the right of way of Beauchamp Avenue, the center line of Beauchamp Avenue. Number two, that a landscape plan in accordance with the zoning resolution be submitted as part of the final development plan. And again, this is the proposed change for tonight. The applicant's requested that the zoning commission remove the condition of a mound in the rear, they're illustrating landscaping and a buffer as well as note, staff is recommending that they note the preservation of the larger trees on the plan. Number three, that both buildings shall be modern in design. The first building has already been approved and that's not proposed to change by the zoning commission. And then the Wings and Rings building would be coming back to you as Phase Two. Number four, a lighting plan, that the applicant agreed to submit a compliant plan that just hasn't been submitted as part of theirs, so they're not requesting any variances, that will be compliant. Number five, vehicular access easement. They have demonstrated cross-access to the properties on both sides for future connection. Number six, that in lieu of a six-foot high privacy fence, a solid screen consulting and diverse, so this is another condition that would be proposed to be modified. The one clarification that staff is suggesting is when the landscaping would be installed, would that be with Phase One or would that be with Phase Two? Because there was some discussion at the last meeting of when that would take place. Number seven, that all signage shall comply with Anderson Township zoning resolution. They will be submitting revised plans for that, and they're not requesting variances or modifications from that condition. Number eight, the stop sign be provided, and that will be provided once the cross-access connection is made. Number nine refers to sidewalk, and that is compliant. Number 10, stacking lanes, that is compliant. Number 11, again, this would be potentially modified, that landscape materials be eight-foot evergreens, two-and-a-half caliber shade trees, and three ground shrubs. And then number 12, that all HVAC and mechanical units be screened, and that is compliant. Number 13, this is the condition that's being considered for tonight, and I'll let the applicant go into more detail about what their conversation was with the neighbor and what they're proposing. But that would be modified tonight if the board agrees. Number 14, that the building should not exceed two stories, that wasn't applicable for the restaurant building. And number 15, that the perimeter landscaping, and this is compliant, although it is unclear what phase that would be installed. So I know that was quick, but I want the applicant to present what their conversation was with the neighbors, and I know several of the neighbors are here as well. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Guyer, would you like to start? Questions for staff?
Yeah, question related to the phasing, when would the underground detention be installed? Is that Phase One or Phase Two?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last word.
The underground retention, is that Phase One or Phase Two?
I think that's a question for the applicant, because I don't know if that's been decided yet.
Okay, I think that's going to impact when the, potentially impact when the landscaping is installed.
Yes.
I agree, should probably identify which trees are to remain. And then just a quick note on the landscaping plan, not really a question, but the proposed trees that are going back in for the buffer, they're noted as deciduous, which I think is consistent with what's there now. My question is, would evergreens be more appropriate if we're trying to provide some sort of screening?
And I think that's a good question too, because generally we do require solid screen from parking lots. And that I think was part of the conversation with the neighbors also. So I think that is a valid question for the applicant.
No further questions.
Mr. Gothard, did you have any questions for staff?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Dungus?
In regards to not having the lighting or sign plan included as required, would that, that still be a condition of getting the zoning certificate? Or would we have to put a condition, if we were to approve this, would we have to put a condition on that those were included, or is that not necessary?
I don't think that's necessary. It was part of the condition of the original plan. The lighting plan, the applicant stated they would comply. So we'll review it when it comes in. It was, they needed some adjustment to some of the footcandles at the residential property line, so that will be adjusted and we can approve that. And the signage as well, we haven't received a rendering yet of the sign.
Okay. Then I have some questions or conversations with the neighbors, but I'll let the applicant discuss that first. Thanks.
Mr. Gothard? No questions. I don't think I actually have any questions for you either, Paul. Thank you.
So if there are any applicants or representatives who would like to, would you please let the lecturer start?
I was granted the opportunity to start. Brian Bender, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 5899 Montclair Boulevard, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45150. Paul, thank you very much for having us out and the staff report, thank you for hearing it. And I'd really like to thank the neighbors for coming out and waiting through all this was, being the last one on the agenda, I'm sure that they were itching to get home. As it stated, we did have a conversation with the neighbors, this was after the owner of Buffalo Wings and Rings and I had talked on the phone and said, we're building this eight-foot mound, we're taking out these 60, 80-foot tall trees and any kind of vegetation that they had in the back, and we're installing instead an eight-foot tall mound that essentially is going to back up, right up to these neighbors' fences. And that kind of started a discussion, and we were able to get in touch with some of the neighbors and meet them in the field and kind of show them, hey, here's kind of some ideas that we had, is like, we could, if we build this mound, we have to necessarily take out the big trees because, you know, they will die eventually anyway. And it would really, really detract from kind of what's to the east and west of the mound. So in discussions with the neighbors, we discussed leaving the existing trees there, maybe cleaning up some of the interior, it's a little bit of scrub brush in there, it's not horrible by any means, but there are some scrub brush and planting new trees because obviously those, the large trees will die eventually and have to be taken down. So we wanted to start the replacement program as early as possible. That also led to another discussion with water going through the neighbor's property. And right now, there is an easement, there's a stormwater easement, it's not meant for a storm sewer, it's meant for drainage from the Wings and Rings site onto the neighbors, actually goes through the backyard of one of the neighbors. And as we were out there, granted, it was winter, but it was a very, very soggy ground. And that led to the idea that says, okay, well, as part of this, we could potentially connect an underground storm sewer system to an existing storm sewer system that's kind of between two properties. And that would take all the water from the Wings and Rings site, put it into the storm sewer system so that it's no longer running onto the neighbor's property. The neighbors also pointed out another drainage problem where there's a low spot essentially right on the back fence line, maybe about six, eight feet into the Wings and Rings property. And that seems to be holding water and it has been collecting mosquitoes and everything else out there. As part of this plan as well, we decided, you know, we have a pipe there, let's go ahead and plop another catch basin and drain that area as well. So the owner is proposing an entirely vegetated buffer at this point, but is also very willing to work with neighbors and hear their concerns and, you know, kind of respond to those as best as possible. And with that, I'll leave it up to any questions you may have.
Mr. Guyer, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'll just ask you the question about the decision to use the deciduous trees versus some evergreens.
We're using, well, the deciduous trees themselves, red oaks and a few maples in back, those are meant to replace the trees that are there. And then we also are showing a row of verburnums, which are deciduous in nature also, but they do plump up and they're nice and full trees as well. And those are, once again, those are plants and species that we can replace, we can use some kind of arborvitae's or something to that effect. You know, once again, work with the neighbors to find out exactly what they want. I'm going to let the owner step in and provide some more additional information.
I'm Tom Davis, I'm with Buffalo Wings and Rings, 396 Ward's Corner Road. Do want to point out that we are putting a complete row of arborvitaeum, which is an evergreen-type tree, along our parking lot there to help block some of this and do this. And then the deciduous trees, we're trying to just infill where the big trees are not. And we want to leave those, that's what we were trying to propose here. But we'll be glad to put whatever we need in there to help the situation. How this really got started was I was looking at the drainage and all that and thought, it's an easy thing to pipe that to the existing catch basin that's there. And I thought that's, because of the earlier meetings, we heard some comments about water and drainage and that kind of stuff, and I thought, that's an easy fix on that. So I contacted Mr. Chow, and he was gracious enough to meet us out there and have us take a look at the situation. And like you stated, it was very soggy out there, so we understand where the problem was. With us retaining the water underground, we're going to stop about 95% of that water from ever coming back there. We're also proposing to put a, another catch basin right at our property line to catch any- any remaining water that comes down that way. So it would all be going in there, and hopefully would dry heat the property up and nothing flat. And then, like I said, the evergreen trees, that part came up about having to take the trees down to put the mound in. You know, if we leave the trees, you can't put the mound in, so that's what we're trying to, to get clear here. We'll be glad to put whatever landscape we need to back there to clean that up. We want it to look nice also. It's going to be part of our properties. We want it to look nice and good. But we also want to protect the residents. So whatever we need to do, what we're showing, like I said, are the evergreens there along the parking and deciduous, they go into a straight road, but we'll probably have to walk them in between the existing trees as needed. But we'll do that, we'll actually meet with the residents afterwards, and when you put more in, we'll be glad to do that.
Mr. Gothard, did you have any questions?
You know, I think a lot of mine goes back to phasing. You know, for stormwater detention, what portion is going to be in phase one for the Panera site? What, you know, are you going to run the pipe from your property to the pipe stormwater in the residential area, phase one, phase two? You know, all the stormwater, where is that going in your phasing?
The intent, we've had two conversations already with Panera and Compton Natty about trying to do all this at one time, because it's going to be advantageous for us and them if we can get all this done at one time. So we're trying to figure out how to bid this thing out, to get numbers in, so we can have numbers on division of the property and work. So what we're trying to do is get them to do all our site work and just leave the building pad vacant. They're also running the utilities through their property to ours, they'll go ahead and loop them into our building pad. So they also do not want us bringing heavy equipment across their property. So we're trying to work that through right now. As soon as we get this plan approved and that, we'll get the plans revised and go out to bid, and once we get numbers, we can do that. So our intent is actually to do both phases at one time. The only thing that would be left is our building, because we're still working with our architects on what design of that building is going to look like, how many offices we're going to have now that. We put the largest footprint we could on there, just that. It may be smaller, it may come in a little bit, we don't know yet what it's technically going to look like. We've got another meeting with the architect scheduled for the middle of March, so hopefully we get some, something resolved on that then. But the intent is to get as much done now. And like you're saying, the landscaping will be done with phase one.
So all the landscaping that's adjacent to the neighbors, phase one?
Yes.
All of site work.
Just to clarify, the, the phasing for the Panera site is the, the, or the landscaping at the very rear of the property.
Right.
So then, phase two would be along the two sides.
Okay. Yeah, so phase one, sort of from the edge of your pavement next to the residential, everything from that edge of pavement towards the residential will be completed in phase one with Panera. Whether you build a building today or tomorrow, or five weeks from now, all that will be done.
And we do have a contingency plan for the stormwater as well, that if the Wings and Rings site is not built immediately upon the Panera, that there is a detention pond, a temporary detention pond in the back that will eventually be removed and replaced with the permanent underground structure.
Yeah, with the same pipe, but can be used.
Correct. So the, the pipe coming from the neighbor's property across to ours would be the phase one. That would be, so they're not having to tear up landscaping in the future.
So really, you're looking at piping until you get to the catch basin at the upper right-hand corner of the parking field?
Correct.
Correct. So that'll all be phase one, when you mobilize on site, that'll all be done with that phase?
Correct.
Yeah, hopefully you get all of that together.
Right, yeah, and that's what we're hoping for.
And then all the landscaping from that same curb line back would be done, you know, with initial construction on site?
Which curb line are you speaking of?
The one on the very far right of the plan.
Yes, so from the far right to essentially the, I'm going to say, the left edge of the Wings and Rings. That will all be the phase two, just, we don't want to have to come back in and, you know, replant if it gets damaged.
I mean, you talked about plans for a temporary detention basin if phasing doesn't work out.
Correct.
I mean, is that just a surface basin?
Yes.
Silk control, all of that?
That, it'll be, number one, it's for the construction, silk control, and then upon completion of construction, they muck it out, and then it's your permanent. Once again, hopefully, we aren't in that situation, and, you know, everything goes as planned, and all of this gets built at once, except for the Wings and Rings building. But we're kind of on a schedule that we have to meet with Panera and then also Wings and Rings, so, and go through you all to get approvals for all of this.
And, you know, I remember the first time coming in, you had just recently done site borings back there, and yes, it was a mucky mess.
Yes.
Is there any ideas of any sort of, you know, subsurface sort of drainage? Or does your plan, because there's minimal grading sort of between parking and the residential area?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any sort of, you know, dry wells or anything like that to sort of dry that out over time?
Well, once we put the underground retention in, we'll catch all that and catch all that. The only green here to be left will be that final back space back there. And like I was saying, we're going to put a catch basin in right to property line in case we have some residual from that that'll catch that.
Okay. So the belief is with any sort of grading, that one detention, you know, inlet right at the property line will take any surface water off quickly, so it doesn't, it dries out?
Right, correct. Yeah, and we'll fill in and work back there, because there are some low areas that have been developed back there over time, so we'll fill all that in. We don't want to take out any more undergrowth or anything, we have to, but we want to fill in the low spot back there.
Yeah, and, you know, filling with respect to the trees, you don't overfill, and in essence kill them because you've overburdened them.
Just enough to drain.
Okay. You know, again, looking at the plantings on the landscape plan, you know, you've got the red oaks and the maples, but then you've got a deciduous, deciduous shrub along there, you know. Probably some of the questions of the residential's are, do they realize that, you know, in the wintertime, they have the density, but they don't have the foliage to block any head plates and things like that?
Right, and so we're putting a row of arborvitum or evergreen trees along there to try to block that.
That's verburnum we talked about. Verburnums are deciduous.
I'd say it wrong.
Yeah, I can't say it either.
Okay, that's all the questions, sorry. Thank you.
No, I, the only question I was going to ask was how to pronounce that tree as well. I've been trying to figure it out for about fifteen years. I don't have any questions, thank you.
I got one.
Sure.
So you've talked to the neighbors back here, and I hope we'll hear from some of them tonight. Can you confirm that you've talked to each of the neighbors whose property's about yours?
I called Mr. Chow, he was gracious enough to let's come out. The day we came out, Mr. McQuary, on the right side of him, happened to be there, so we had to talk both of them. Mr., I don't know how to pronounce this right, Mr. Hunt on the other side was not there, so we have not talked with him.
Okay, so two of the three you've discussed this plan with. And to your knowledge, they're in agreement with the changes?
Yes, as far as I know, but they're...
They will have comments also.
Okay. Mr. Chow, let me talk to the... I'm sorry, I'm curious why, so... Okay, that's all that I had, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to come up and speak in favor of the changes that are being proposed tonight, please do so now, or feel welcome to now. I've got a coin.
I was going to say, they're drawing straws. No mine shorter, no mine shorter.
I'm Terry McQuary. I live at 8518 Sunmont Drive, and we are one of the properties that are directly impacted. And Mr. Davis and...
Mr. Bender.
Mr. Bender?
Bender, yeah.
They both spoke with my husband. He was at home during the day when they came out. The only additional thing we, you know, want to possibly request, that in addition to like the maple or the oak trees that they're going to plant, because we do appreciate having that line of trees there that were going to be taken out initially, if they could add some evergreens to help put in more density there. Then, the other thing is, we wanted to be assured that the water situation would be addressed with phase one. That we already have issues with water, and we want to make sure that we don't have any more. But essentially, that's our main concern at this time. Any questions of me? Thank you. Thank you.
If there are any other audience members who'd like to come up and speak in favor of the proposed changes, feel welcome to.
So I have a question, do I need to, it's not really...
Yes, please.
Sorry, don't do this much. I also live on Sunmont. My name is Laura Semler, S-E-M-L-E-R, and I live at 8568 Sunmont Drive, so I'm a little bit farther up the street. But when I read about this, the, the water plan connecting into the Sunmont sewer system, I'm just worried about, has anybody looked at the current Sunmont sewer system to ensure that all this water that's going to come off this property, it will, you know, that it can handle it, that it's not going to cause other problems for other homeowners on that street? You know, i.e. flooding or something, so. So I lived in Hyde Park for a while, so I know all about flooding and, you know, water lines breaking, sewer lines, you know, eroding, so when I hear about, you know, something connecting into a sewer line, I'm like, whoa! So it's just a thought. I don't know if that had been considered when you came out with this plan. So to me, that sounds like an awful lot of water that's going to come off that property. So, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other audience members who'd like to speak in favor of tonight's changes?
I don't know whether I'm in favor or against.
Come on up.
I don't know where to fall on the line, but we'll be...
Hi, I'm Linda Goggle. I live at 8500 Sunmont, so I actually am the house in the cul-de-sac, so right alongside the edge, the, the edge property. So I'm, I'm very happy to hear, if I understood correctly, that they're going to put evergreens up, up the side, it sounds like, of the property, almost like a U shape there of the parking lot? Because my view is right in through the side, so I miss the buffer of that back road that they're talking about. I'm right into the side of that parking lot. So, so if that's what I'm understanding, I'm happy to hear. Am I understanding that?
I'll be out here a little bit if I can.
Okay.
We'll put an arborvitum here, but these are evergreen trees also.
Okay.
We're putting it in the corner to help block.
Okay, so that will, that will help from my side, so I'm happy to...
I think these are spruce trees.
Okay. So that, that will be, that will be helpful from my view, so I'm happy to hear that.
Down, down this way?
Yes, I'm right, I'm right here.
Okay.
So I'm coming this way.
We'll have spruce trees. There's several of them there, got some more maples and oaks in there to cover it in a little bit. But we have them all the way up here.
So that will be very helpful. And I also am happy with keeping some of the trees. My only, my, one big fear is that if you clear so much out and you only keep, you know, maybe twenty-foot of trees, how long will it be before those trees die? You know, if you're putting, if you're putting underwater detention and clearing all the other trees out, I, I don't know what that will do to the root damage of the trees that are left. So, so there, there really does need to be something to kind of protect that area a little bit. And then, the only other comment I wanted to make was, I too, as I'm sure my neighbors do, hope, as you hope, that this all does get done together. Because if we have an above-ground ten, retention pond, you know, is it going to have a pump in it? Is it just going to be stagnant water that stays in there? That, that whole part of it in between worries me on the water in the back as well. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Hello?
I don't know. I'm just... I'm worried, like...
Can you please say your name and address real quick?
Oh, sure, I can. Beverly Chow, 8510 Sunmont Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. Our land is, is where all the dam, all the water drains into, so we get it from, like, Pamela, we get it from Beechmont, because our, the storm is in our, half of our yard. So the water has just eroded our yard like you can't even, it's awful. So my question, I guess, is with the land behind our house, most of the trees are falling over from all the rotting. It's nothing but drenched soil back there. It's always drenched, it just never dries out. So I guess I'm questioning if they do do all this for us, and that's awesome when they do that, but if the, the soil itself doesn't have any nutrients anymore, and they plant trees, and then they die because there isn't any nutrients or anything for them, then who's responsible for replacing those again when it doesn't work out the first time? Then do we go, we just don't have any trees back there? And it just bare, or what? Because unless they do something to help that soil, I don't think a lot of it is going to grow or stay. So that's just my question.
Sure, thank you.
Hello, I'm, I'm Kate Daly. I live at 8532 Sunmont, and I'm about two houses away from the property towards the east. My concern is with the landscaping plan, from what I am reading here, it's very minimal the number of trees they're putting up around the property, given the amount of concrete that we are going to have. They're removing a huge swath of, of trees, you know, whether it's full-grown trees or undergrowth. And I live right behind graders, and I saw what they promised to do and then did not do. I can see the pet shop on the other side of Beechmont from my kitchen window, because they did not put the trees up that they said. So I have a question as to the number of trees. When I look to the east side of their property, I can see six evergreens. And that is in a hundred and sixty-five foot space, if my husband's measuring and math is correct. So six evergreens in a hundred and sixty-five feet is extremely, what?
Sixty-five.
Oh, you've got a hundred and sixty-five, okay. Sixty-five feet, even so, is very, very minimal. So we are going to still see that parking lot, we're going to see all the cars, we're going to be looking at it this way, not this way, but we will be able to see it. And then the same would be from the other direction for the goggles, that same amount of space, they're very limited. So my question is, when they propose a plan like this, do they have to put the specific number of trees and stick to that? Could we request a whole lot more trees? Because I hear you're saying, we want to do whatever we can for the neighbors, and I, and I am reiterating the fact that evergreens do need to be across the back of that property. The neighbors right there, they're going to just see that parking lot. I mean, it's so close to their property line. So that is my question. I know they also had like red buds along the office building and hot thorns. Those are deciduous trees, and they're not going to really provide any screen come winter. When I'm in our backyard during the summer, it's great. We've got deciduous trees, we don't have any evergreens in our backyard except the ones we planted, and you really can't see Beechmont. But when winter comes and all these deciduous trees are there, you're going to see everything. There's really no screen. So I would really like to see quick growing, like cypress, like green giant cypress along the sides of this property, as far up as, as they could go, because it's a two-story building. So there's a lot that's going to be seen through the woods during the winter. And not only for the aesthetic value during the winter, but also for the noise. There's going to be a lot of traffic in and out there. Panera has outdoor seating, if I'm correct on that. So we can hear the noises from graders right now, and then you're going to have additional, two additional buildings right there on... There's gonna be a lot of traffic in and out there. Panera has outdoor seating, if I'm correct on that. So we can hear the noises from graders right now, and then you're gonna have additional, two additional buildings right there on top of one another. And then the other piece of it is just helping with the water situation. You know, every plant that's planted, every tree that's planted will help that despite the fact that these retention basins, et cetera, are supposed to help. So that's what I have to say. But if you could answer that, I would love to know about the specific numbers of trees on a plan. If there is anything that property owners have to be held to? If that's the plan that's submitted and that's the one approved, do they have to have all those trees after construction?
Yes, I can actually answer that. We do count trees and shrubs when we go out to do the final, so yes, they do have to install what's on their plan.
Okay, and the bushes along, you know, they're saying they're deciduous trees along the, I mean, those are just little things, so those are really not gonna provide any screen for neighbors, so. But I would propose a whole lot more. I'd like to count a lot of dots and then later on go down the road and say, count the trees, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other audience members who'd like to come up and speak about the proposal tonight? If not, I'd like to invite the applicant back up to answer any questions that might have stood out.
Sure. I'm gonna start with the last one, which was the number of trees. Paul pretty much answered, he's like, yes, we are required to plant the trees that we're showing on the plans. We did talk about the deciduous five burnums. They start out this, but they do get up to ten feet tall. We talked about them being deciduous, and we also talked about working possibly with staff to get those to evergreen of some sort. And once again, we're very, very open to that. I do agree, the green giants are absolutely amazing. Unfortunately, this is a, from where this is, those trees would be facing north. They require a lot of sun. They're not gonna get it in this location, so we would have to find another tree that would do a little bit better in the shade. Uh, let's see, what else do we have? Waters, damage to the trees, the trees out there, yes, they're getting wet. There's low spots in the back. Once again, we're gonna try to grade that so that we can get a little bit more runoff to the back, and we are adding the catch basin so that we're, that'll be sunk in the ground a little bit so the water will actually seep in. The, another one, another question that came up was about the amount of water coming through there. Once again, whether it be the detention pond that we have or the underground detention, everything will be going into one of those kinds of ponds, going underground into the existing sewer. The amount of water that we're putting in there is no greater than the amount of water that's going there now. It just comes at different, different times, and I always liken it to, you have a glass of water and you're pouring it into a big cup. Eventually, that glass of water comes out. Well, you know, when you have a site like this, you have more water, so now you have another bucket and you're dumping it in, but it's not coming out of that big bucket any faster than it was coming out of the small cup. It's just more water over time. So I do wanna let the neighbors know, it's like, no, we're not going to cause your flooding downstream. It'll be very controlled what it is now. And let's see, the evergreens for density, and I believe, I think I hit them all on the nail there, so I don't know if there's other questions from staff or from council that need to be addressed.
Thank you very much. And with that, I think we can open up to commission discussion. And Mr. Guyer, if you'd like to start with any discussion points you might have.
So my main discussion point, I guess, is just, I applaud the fact that they're trying to keep the existing vegetation and removing the more utilitarian berm, I would call it. I think that's a good decision. So it's probably not a talking point, just more of a point to be made. That's all I have.
Mr. Gauthier?
Yeah, I would agree with her. My commission member, you know, it's nice that we're being neighborly and talking to each other to come up with the best solution for the existing residents that live there, but also work with the new development. So, you know, I applaud you guys all for that. You know, I do think, you know, a lot of work needs to be done on introducing some evergreens along that, you know, south curb line to provide additional screening. You know, unfortunately, you don't know what the deciduous looks like until the leaves drop off, and then you're kind of stuck at a park like that. So again, I think, you know, working with the neighbors and with staff, you guys can work that together. You know, I do appreciate the explanation of what phase one and phase two is. I think, you know, for the greater good of the development, you know, making sure the stormwater, even if it's a temporary detention basin, is handled in a professional and aesthetic manner and also doesn't cause any other issues, you know, during the overall development or even silk, you know, going into the piping and causing future ones, you know, will be key for the success of the development. You know, I still know the development has some non-compliant things that Paul went through. You know, we know those are gonna be taken care of with staff. So again, thank you all very much. That's all comments I have.
Mr. Dungus?
Yeah, I think I would echo what the other commissioners have said. I think to add to what the applicant stated about the stormwater runoff and the concerns, he described what the condition would be and that it's not gonna runoff any faster than it is now. But I guess just to provide some assurances, that is a calculation that the county does to ensure that the water does not leave the site post-development any faster than it does now or in any greater volume of flow for that matter. So just to provide some assurances, more than just their word or their calculations, but that is a reviewed process. Yeah, and I think to address the neighbors' concerns, to, and I think that we could probably maybe put it on staff with the condition to ensure that some of these deciduous plantings were switched to evergreen.
Yeah, I think too, I mean, you know, the scope of tonight's discussion was really focused around, you know, this is an already approved final development plan, but we're, you know, wanting to make some changes to this property line here with regard to the berm and landscaping. And through that discussions, you know, some additional things came to light, especially with regard to deciduous versus coniferous or whatever other species of plants that are gonna be planted there. So I think that can be included in the condition, but with regard to the berm, we did have residents here who the developer spoke with and voiced their support. And I think, to me, that's always the most valuable thing that we can gather, is, you know, those withstanding, what are their thoughts and opinions? And what impact, you know, is this gonna have upon them? And I think we're in a good shape here with some slight modifications to the landscaping plan. Is there any further discussion at this point? I don't think I have any either. So if there is a motion to be made, I'll entertain that.
I will move to approve the final development plan for case one dash twenty nineteen, phase one, with the modi, to include the conditions in the staff's report with the modification to allow for the modified landscaping plan in lieu of the previously planned mound. And in addition, upon the staff's approval of changing out some of the deciduous trees to evergreens, specifically along the back half of the lot to provide better screening for the neighbors.
If I could perhaps modify that to not necessarily swap out, but maybe add?
Add, okay.
I would second that motion.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Mr. Gauthier?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you. At this point, I think we can close this meeting of the zoning commission and thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight.